Okay, good morning, everybody. Thank you for joining us this morning. We're going to begin, just actually, we're going to begin right now. Or we're on the air. Thank you for coming to the July 12, 2016 Board of Supervisors meeting. And if you could all join with me in the pledge, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. I guess it's time for roll call.
Supervisor Pine?
Here.
Supervisor Groom?
President.
Supervisor Horstley?
President.
Supervisor Tissier?
Here.
President Slocum?
Here, thank you. Just a couple of little short announcements. First of all, this morning, we're going to do something a little different for public comment. Normally, the president calls the names of the speakers. And this morning, we're going to try something new. We're going to actually have our board clerk call the names. And part of the logic for that change is just he'd have to collect the cards, bring them over here, and he was constantly, you know, when there's a big crowd, bringing them over. So it seemed like maybe it would be more efficient if the clerk just called the names from his spot over there. The other thing that has happened a couple of times is we missed a couple of speakers inadvertently, and so perhaps this just makes the process a little more efficient. And if everybody's okay with that, we'll try that this morning and see what happens. Before we get to the public comment, I'd like to ask that we take a moment of silence. I'm sure that all of us have been deeply shaken by the images that have come across the various media outlets, CNN, and everybody else. And this morning, I'd like to ask that we honor the victims across the country who've lost their lives to violence. I would ask that we take a moment of silence in their memory this morning. And also to remember those who were injured, both physically and mentally, as they deal with these tragic events. And of course, our thoughts and prayers go out to their families and the entire communities as they struggle with the aftermath of these tragedies. And I don't know if Supervisor Horstley wanted to add anything to that, but if so, it would be appropriate now.
Well, thank you, President Slocum. I did mention this in the office early this morning. I was thinking about specifically the Dallas officers. Having spent so many years of my life in law enforcement, 35 years, that, you know, it's all families who have law enforcement officers, just sort of bleed blue for the officers who were killed and for their families. And I was resurrecting, or relecting, can't even get to the word, but recollecting in my career, having gone through a number of, not necessarily sheriff's deputies, but officers who were killed in the line of duty, and telling a story to my staff people about at least one occasion when we had to, I was getting, given a call and had to go out to the scene of an officer being killed in the line of duty. And as I put my gun on, my son wrapped his arms around my legs and said, "Don't go, Dad." And it just brought home to me that the families think of, you know, you potentially being killed every day. We don't think of that, officers, at least I never did when I was in uniform. I never thought that I would get hurt. But my family thought I might, and they worried about me. And I never forgot that little boy. And so thinking about all of our officers and how it impacts our families, it impacts them in a very deep emotional way. So we grieve for the officers and try to do everything we can for their families and want all those officers who are doing so much to protect us every day that we do appreciate them. And the other thing, the final thing I'd say is that when the officers, you know, you just watch what's going on in Dallas and law enforcement, and I know they've made mistakes, and I've told my family that I used to have to, I used to annually trying to remove people who didn't, who shouldn't serve. And I remember, actually, I created, I went through a long process and created a new law that said that the appointing authority has the authority to take away a police officer pill of authority. And so I actually did that on occasion, and it's actually state law that the appointing authority, even if through arbitration or court proceedings, you might lose a disciplinary, you can still take that gun away from an officer who should not have a gun. But most of them, my, I always felt, 99% of my officers and 99% of police officers did their best to protect citizens on an everyday basis. And one of the best examples in Dallas Police, and I think is one of the better departments in the country, when those officers were being fired on, they didn't know that they were being the target. They thought it was the, they thought it was the crowd. And they ran towards the gunfire, and some of the officers actually tried to, you know, one of them, at least with his body covered, a family with their children. They didn't know they were the victims. They didn't know that they were the targets. They thought that the citizens were. So that, it showed, it was a tragic event, but it showed the best in what officers do on a daily basis. We all know that there are mistakes, and some of the things that we've seen on videos really demonstrate in a visceral way that there, there needs to be changes, there needs to be new training, there needs to be new sensitivity. But that's not a part of all of us. We all have to do that. And another thought I had is that one of the things that we do, that we always have Black History Month, and we really need to make that, you know, something more spectacular, more important, and really emphasize more of that, what our fellow citizens have done so much for this country, including building the Capitol. Many people don't know that. Building New York City. So we need to really focus on Black history. We need to, as citizens, as I think as one of the presidential candidates Hillary Clinton said, we need to talk to each other. And this violence, we've got to do something about it. Nobody wants to live like this. Nobody wants to have these tragedies, whether it's the children in Sandy Hook, or it's the police officers in Dallas. We don't want this to be our country. We don't want this to be our future. So just in closing, you know, we all have to do a better job of reaching out and talking and, I guess, just being a better country.
Thank you, Supervisor. If you could all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this point, we'll move to public comment. Mr. Clerk?
First speaker we have is Martin Fox, followed by Paul Gregriff.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, my fellow veteran, Mr. Baalpy, and county council, Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county. Please help the persons and the family members of persons living with serious mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily receive Laura's Law services by supporting the development of a training program for improving the delivery of services to the mentally ill and commending the Measure A Oversight Committee's courageous February 23 report that 239 of the 283 persons who were released under the early review of mentally ill people in jail program did not connect with the community-based services they needed. Counties that choose to implement assisted outpatient treatment or Laura's Law are required to develop a training program for improving the delivery of services to the mentally ill. The training must provide mental health treatment providers, law enforcement and certification hearing officers with education about the criteria for detention of persons, including grave disability, and methods for ensuring that voluntary involuntary treatment decisions direct patients towards the most effective treatment under Welfare and Institutions Code, Section 5349.1. Even if the statute is ignored, the Measure A Oversight Committee's February 23 report shows that the intellectually and morally bankrupt voluntary treatment policies and procedures of the correctional mental health system needs to be completely rewritten. Having a website and a telephone number or an email address to request help for a mentally ill person is only one part of Laura's Law. Developing a training program for improving the delivery of services to the mentally ill is another part. Please help the persons and the family members of persons living with serious mental illness who lack the capacity to seek treatment voluntarily receive Laura's Law services by supporting the development of the training program for improving the delivery of services and commend Measure A's Oversight Committee for its courageous February 23 report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
Next is Paul Gregriff, followed by Judy Horst.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Paul Gregoriff. I'm a resident of the San Mateo Coastside from Half Moon Bay. I came over the hill this morning to put in a quick good word for the very hard work being done over at the Harbor District by some of our Harbor Commissioners and their senior staff. In particular, I'd like to give very high marks to the efforts of Tom Matouche, the President of the Board, and Sabrina Brennan, one of our long-serving elected Commissioners. These two Commissioners, along with Steve McGrath, the new district manager, have worked hard from the beginning to set up the new finance committee, which is guiding the district back to financial health. They've pushed to retire a lot of the old debt. And Sabrina, as you all probably know, has also focused on solving the serious problems at the Oyster Point Marina. She's also now spearheading the Harbor District's initiatives on the problems of sea level rise, an increasing priority for all of us. Another reason I wanted to speak to you had to do with the comments from Supervisor Horstley that I saw in the press about the Harbor District. Now, I'm sure that Don didn't mean to slight anyone, but he really didn't seem to me to be giving credit where the credit was due. He also seemed to be forgetting that Tom Matouche and Sabrina Brennan are two Commissioners that from the get-go have not tried to split their time between the Harbor District and simultaneous service on other public boards and commissions. So I wanted to add in my two cents worth of praise for the really hard workers over there at the Harbor District. And I also wanted to say that we coast-siders really appreciate your support, and we hope you'll all come down often to beat the heat and enjoy what you've created on the coastside. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Judy Horst, followed by Lenny Roberts.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. And I'm, we're here to ask the Supervisors to help us with an urgency interim oak protection ordinance for Menlo Oaks. I provided packets which will back up in both statistics and information and photos for you if you choose to consider to do this. We work very close with the County Building and Planning Commission, and we hope that it also will find that this will be to its benefit. As you know, there's been a considerable development in Menlo Oaks. It's a very rustic, bucolic part of the county. It has its own savanna of oaks. But in the last two years that we've been working as a group, the Menlo Oaks Tree Advocacy Moda, we call ourselves, we found that we've lost about 10% of the canopy. This is due to developers coming in and scraping the sites and leaving a few trees on the outside so that it appears that they haven't really taken out very many trees. They do this often legally and sometimes by accident or illegally. When they do it legally, we've, throughout the county, we did a research study, and it shows that 98% of all oak, heritage oak tree permits are granted. And that's usually because no one stands up or wants to fight against that. And many of these trees are healthy because the surveys done by the Arborists only are required to do a very cursory study. They don't have to do an advanced study where they really get into the tree and decide whether it's really sick. The reports favor whoever asks for it, whether it's a homeowner or a developer. We think that an urgency protection order is, will help us and will help the county stem this unfortunate demise of our heritage oaks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we go to the next speaker, can we, you know, I have talked to this group of citizens in Menlo Oaks before, and it seems to be a recurring problem. And I know the planning has done some things, but apparently it hasn't been as effective as we would hope. Could you, could we get a report back with, from our planning department, and specifically look at both this urgency ordinance as well as perhaps setting up some, a committee of citizens to deal with this issue? Because I know it's really a very serious issue, and I know one of the things that the builders do is they take these things down, and then they ask for forgiveness afterwards. And it's too late to be able to fix the problem.
Through the President to Supervisor Horstley. We'll bring a, at least an interim report update back to you on the 26th. I know planning's been working on this issue for a while now, but we'll let you know what the status is on the 26th.
Thank you.
Lenny Roberts, followed by Michael Stogner.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'm Lenny Roberts. I'm speaking for Committee for Green Foothills. And I'm just here in support of Judy Horst and the Menlo Oaks Tree Advocacy. I don't usually come before you under public comment. So this seems to me to be a really crisis that's occurring in the Menlo Oaks area. And last week, one of the trees on one of these properties that had its roots severely cut into as part of a development proposal actually fell over. So we lost a tree that wasn't intended to be taken out. That was due to, I would say, construction practices that damaged the roots severely. So Menlo Oaks is named well. It's named for the oak trees. It was an oak savanna before we started developing big, beautiful trees, heritage valley oaks and coastal oaks. And it really defines the community, and the community greatly, most people in the community value those trees. But as people are coming in and either subdividing or replacing older homes, sometimes the oaks are inconveniently in the way. And we think that better protection is really required for those trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Stogner, followed by Albert Franklin.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name's Michael Stogner. I'm from San Carlos, and I'm coming back to just talk about a subject that I've been interested in for about 15 years in San Mateo County, and that is to eliminate prosecutorial misconduct in our courts. And I just think that that will make San Mateo County safer. And I know that, I think a simple database would solve the problem. I believe prosecutorial misconduct is alive and well in San Mateo County because our judges allow it, and they see it happening right in front of them and then just don't do anything about it. I think it's just part of the system. It's also not just for San Mateo County. It's nationwide. Also recently, a person communicated to me on this subject. His name is Colin T. Smith. I spoke to this board about a year ago when Colin T. Smith, who used to be a sheriff deputy for San Mateo County, he was convicted in our courts. He faced up to nine years in prison. And the judge reversed the conviction because of prosecutorial misconduct. And then I came here asking you to please ask the district attorney to make sure he commits to retry the case. And as it turned out, our district attorney did not retry the case. And Colin T. Smith's words to me on a public board, "I do appreciate you pointing out the prosecutorial misconduct because there was plenty of that." Now, that's a man that actually benefited from it. But there are lots of people that don't benefit from it. And one of my major complaints about prosecutorial misconduct is I think it's cowardly that we have public employees knowingly either having false evidence filed or not delivering the documents to the opposing team. So I'm interested in a level playing field. I think it makes San Mateo County safer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stogner.
Albert Franklin, followed by Paul McGregor.
In the early 70s, San Mateo County gave me money to open a school at Hoover, and within six weeks after that, I had turned the academic pool for East Redwood City around. The city manager, Mr. Smith, Jim Smith, told me that citizens were so shocked that they demanded summer school at Selby Lane. But today, that academic pool has reversed itself. And to me, with yesterday's newspaper article, "More high schoolers head to college early", there's absolutely no mention of distributive education, which is a part of the high school curriculum. There's absolutely no mention of junior achievement in high school or junior college. And in Southern California, they have both.
Paul McGregor, followed by Haley, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce the last name, Haley Crum?
Good morning, Board. I came in today because I'm not getting the answers that I need concerning your affordable housing fee. I've been waiting for three weeks to get a simple question answered pertaining to the fees. So when I went in on the 27th, one of the planners informed me that the fees will be paid, all fees will be paid after, I mean, August 8th pertaining to this rule. And my understanding is that if a project was deemed complete, deemed complete, that we would not be subjected to the fees. So my question is, what does deemed complete mean? Does that mean deemed complete at the planning stage, building stage? What is the answer to that? I would like to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Haley, followed by Jim Griffith.
Mr. Clerk, just a second. Can we, can we answer that question for him?
You know, what I can do is take his number and sit down and talk about his individual circumstances so that I understand precisely what the facts are, and then see if we can, you know, get his question answered.
Good morning, President and Council. My name is Haley Crum, and I am CEO and founder of Retrain the Village. I've been in District 4 for the past three years, and I've housed permanently veterans, reunified families, cut crime in the East Palo Alto area. They say up to 300%. This is my first time outside of a private meeting with Mr. Warren Slocum, thank you, who has supported me. So it's kind of difficult because of the rising prices of rent now. And as the rules go, if someone is living at Retrain the Village, which is a nonprofit organization, corporation, that they're considered permanently housed. It's difficult for me to move them on without the support of the county and without the support of the city. I've been doing this virtually alone for three years. And I have a passion for veterans. I have a passion for what's going on in our communities and to reduce crime. I don't ask for anything, but thank you, Warren. Please, thank you. You have supported me so, so much. And the county of San Mateo, even the judges have supported me and my guys. I housed a veteran on May 1st in the home permanently. December 23rd, I housed a veteran into his own place at Willow Glen, I mean Willow Apartments. I plan on doing a lot more without hoarding people. I supply their food, their Wi-Fi, their cable, and their PG&E. I was really extremely blessed to have a home for a low amount. So I don't take all of their money. I just wanted to introduce myself and to say that this housing crisis elevated so fast that my veterans do need help through the HUD, through the housing, in any way we can, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Mr. Jim Griffith.
Thank you. My name is Jim Griffith. I'm a council member from the city of Sunnyvale. Last month, this body apparently came to an agreement with the FAA to redirect an airline going into San Carlos Airport over our city. This raises a number of questions for the city of Sunnyvale. First and foremost, when did you intend to tell us about it? An act like this, when you decide to take an airline into your airport, you accept that there are certain benefits that come with a certain cost. Deciding to pass that cost off to other neighborhoods is not the act of a responsible body. It is fundamentally an unfriendly act from a bad neighbor. We are looking forward to hearing you address this, and you'll be receiving a letter shortly from our mayor, if you have not already. Second, did it ever occur to you to consult the city of Sunnyvale about this test that you are doing to determine if the test has any validity? Airline travel over Sunnyvale is a very complicated issue, and failing to discuss this with Sunnyvale renders the test pretty much invalid since you don't understand our concerns and you don't understand our people. And finally, what are you going to do to fix this? We look forward to getting an answer to Mayor Hendrick's letter on this topic. We believe we are entitled to answers over exactly what you are doing over our city and why you've decided that our city should pay the cost for your flights rather than your own cities. Thank you.
We're done with public comment?
We're done. Okay. Thank you. We have you for item number three, but it's up to the President if you want to take her.
Pardon?
This, she's for item number three. But if you want, we can take her now.
It's not item number three. It's just for, it's on the off agenda item.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm with Menlo Oaks Tree Advocacy. I'm here just to embellish on what Lenny Roberts and Judy Horst said earlier. We appreciate the time that you've given us up till now in hearing about our plight. We appreciate the attention that the planning department has given us in trying to rectify this problem. And we don't see any salvation for us without an urgency order to protect our neighborhood. We've worked voluntarily for two years to try to interface with the planning and building departments so that everybody can benefit. We are in favor of development in our neighborhood. It's good for the county and good for us to have progress in the neighborhood. What isn't good for us is to see our urban canopy come down before our very eyes, and that's what's happening right now. And it's basically a natural disaster. And while there is a committee formed to study revising the significant tree ordinance for the county, that is a process that will take a number of years to accomplish. And in the meantime, we have just one parcel, an acre of land, that's lost seven trees in less than a year. So if we wait for the outcome of the revision to the heritage tree ordinance, we won't have any oak trees left to protect in our neighborhood. They'll be gone. And it's having an unbelievable impact on the neighbors around this development, where so much is being lost, and it's beyond what volunteers can run around and chase. There are now four properties that have changed hands in the last couple of months since summer began. And all of those properties will probably have development on them of some sort. And if we don't get something in writing that dictates how developers are expected to work around the environment and not just hack it down, we won't, we'll have no environment left. It's terrible. So I know you can't respond to us. We're off agenda, but I would plead for you to consider an urgency ordinance to address this. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of the public comment. So we need to take action to set the agenda here.
I'll move to set the agenda, unless somebody wanted to put something?
I need to abstain on item number 24.
I'll move to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The agenda is set. Now we'll move to presentations and awards. A little change in order here on item number one. I've asked Supervisor Horstley, being the former sheriff, to I've asked Supervisor Horasly, being the former sheriff, to do the proclamation on probation services week, if he'd be so kind.
Thank you, President Slocum. It is my pleasure to introduce this proclamation. So first of all, I'm going to make a motion to approve the proclamation declaring this probation services week.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For those of you who don't know, one time I actually worked for the probation department, long time ago. As a juvenile group supervisor at one of the facilities. And all during my police career, we always worked a lot with probation. I think actually probation officers actually probably make more arrests than police do because people who get arrested, you know, usually they go on probation and probation's officers have to work with them in the community. And so we, in law enforcement, always relied a lot on probation, basically to, first of all, to help people rehabilitate and get back into the community. And some cases where they did not, they were important in terms of getting them back off the streets so that, you know, we can improve public safety. And, you know, over the years, we had such a really close relationship. We used to, and I think they still do, they have probation officers who work with people in the jail and get them into transitional housing. Probation services are an incredibly important part of the criminal justice system, not only in terms of the reports that they give to judges to help them make good sentences, good decisions for people who have violated the law. But the fact is that 90% of the people who go before our courts who have committed a crime actually go back into the community. So probation has a vitally important role in making sure that they are either rehabilitated or habilitated. And so I want to, just, I have the utmost respect and value of the service that probation officers give to our community on an everyday basis. And I think John Kane is here to accept this proclamation, I hope. There he is. It's our very outstanding probation chief, John Kane.
I hope you get as many cameras on your presentation.
John, did you want to say a word to?
Before you actually say a word, John, I actually want to really appreciate what you've done with young women. I know you have daughters, and I know you recently adopted a little boy. But what you've really done with our teen girls at the Margaret Kemp Center, I think is really remarkable and really is a demonstration of your outstanding leadership.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. I appreciate that. Before I start, I have some of my staff and the audience that I would like to have join me up here while I'm making a few comments. My deputy chief of adult services and realignment, and my assistant chief Larry Silver, my deputy director of administration, Hong Liu, and one of my management analysts, Noel Verheger. If you guys wouldn't mind joining me. Before I start, Supervisors, I just want to say, first of all, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to be here today. And through the President to Supervisor Horasly, as a person and a loyal public servant, going into my 28th year of law enforcement, your opening comments this morning, I greatly appreciate it. So thank you very much for that. You know, probation, like many essential services in the county government, started from very humble beginnings. The first probation officer was a cobbler in 1800s in Boston. And he was really just a concerned citizen. There were a lot of kids kind of running amok in the city. And he said, you know what, give me your kids. I'll put them to work, I'll give them something to do, and I promise you'll see a turnaround in their behavior. And from that very humble beginnings, probation kind of got its start. And it's interesting, as we see where we are today, probation has really gone back to the future in a lot of ways. We really are focusing on more client-centered, directed services for the people who we have the ability to work with. That really primarily is our goal today. And as, and Supervisor, I was really encouraged to hear you talk about habilitation. I think you've heard me say it a lot, and so I appreciate that it's stuck in your brain. Because rehabilitation is really the crust of what we do. But honestly, where we are today, we really do more abilitating than we do rehabilitating. Rehabilitating assumes that a person just started someplace poorly, and we just have to get them back to that. But unfortunately, with the challenging times, many of our citizens and many of the young people come to us not really from positive places to begin with. And what probation has to do is oftentimes step into some of those very fundamental spaces that were previously held by teachers and family members and concerned citizens, and hopefully be those positive role models. And that's a job that we take very seriously. So probation services week is an opportunity for us to stop and pause and not really celebrate ourselves, but to really think about the awesome responsibilities that we have and that we really, that we really feel, quite frankly, frame our part of public service. So thank you very much again for taking the opportunity to recognize us. We want to say thank you not only to the Board, but to the courts, to many of our strong county partners, because the reason why probation works is because we have such a collaborative environment here in San Mateo County. So thank you very much. We really greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. And special thanks to the entire team at the probation department. We appreciate everything that you do. We're going to move now to item number two, which is the presentation of a resolution accepting donations and honoring and commending donors related to HackSMC 2016. I'm not sure, is Donna, there she is, Donna Valencourt is here. But let me make the motion first to adopt this resolution. Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you.
President Slocum, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Maltby, Mr. Byers. So last year, the county hosted its first-ever Civic Tech Hackathon, HackSMC. In that case, we had 20 new teams that presented their ideas for web and mobile apps, and they competed for a total of 11,500 in prizes. The purpose of hackathons are to engage citizens in finding digital solutions, to collaborate with us, and also to make use of our open data portal. This year, on May 21st, we had over 100 participants converge on GSB Labs in Redwood City, and it was really a sight to behold. We had teams of families, we had teams of coworkers, teams of friends. The energy in the room was palpable, and then the tension during the judging was pretty intense as well. While participants were encouraged to work on anything, any idea they felt would improve the lives of the people in San Mateo County, this year, with Raina's help, we partnered with the Office of Sustainability, Human Services Agency, and the Health System to develop a list of, a wish list of challenges that the departments would like to find a tech solution for. They also provided judges for the event, so we're very grateful to those departments. So teams were going to judge science fair style. The judges walked around, they asked questions, they saw their work in progress. And then the top 10 had to present their ideas in three minutes. And that's when the tension came in. Along with the honorable mentions and the people's choice, there were five teams that won $1,500 each. And they've been invited to the next phase, which I'll talk about in a minute, which is the Apps Challenge. We got really good feedback from the participants who enjoyed themselves like the new format, and the results were overwhelmingly positive. So the next step is the Apps Challenge, and it's scheduled, mark your calendars, it's scheduled to take place on September 21st here in the board chambers. The five winning teams from the hackathon have been spending the last four months completing their ideas to present a fully functional app or website to the judges. It's going to be open to the public. We'll start, we'll release tickets through Eventbrite starting in August. I just want to give you a sneak preview of the teams that are presenting during the Apps Challenge. The first app is called Big Thanks. And it's, it's from our youngest participant, 13-year-old Anish Singhani, who at the very ripe age of 12, won an honorable mention last year at our Apps Challenge. And this is an app for recruiting and appreciating volunteers. We have one called Shamba, which was also the winner of the Audience Choice Award, and that's connecting day laborers with work. The third is Foxtrot, which is a social app for foster youth, connecting them to their caseworkers, to resources, and to work. We have Jobs for SMC Youth, a jobs app for youth. And finally, SMC Surplus, which is an app that helps the county with its surplus equipment and recycling programs. So we couldn't do this without our sponsors, our volunteers, and the amazing HackSMC Committee. The committee raised 26,000 last year, rolled over 10,000 to this year, and then raised another 11,500. So I would like to acknowledge our sponsors. There were many. GSB Labs, AT&amp;T, Newtonix, Microsoft, Esri, Office Depot, Amazon Web Services, Eaton and Associates, Carbon, HP, Cargill, Allied Waste, Accela, Google, and LifeX. In addition, we were, there were donated door prizes and goods and services, Survey Monkey, Socrata, Plantronics, Cal Ergonomics, Hans, Sparkling Ice, Zola, and the ever-necessary Pete's Coffee and Tea that kept us all going during the day. So it took a village. There were also several county employees that volunteered, and we couldn't have done it without them. So finally, I'd like to acknowledge the HackSMC Committee. They are so incredibly energetic, resourceful, and creative. And they put all this on and work their magic again. Tony Crepo from Human Resources, Julie Goble from HR, Jeffrey Lou, formerly of HR, Daniella Flores, HR, John Reidner, Information Services, Krista Begu, County Managers, and Eric from the County Managers, Foreguard. And I think Julie, Daniella, and Eric are here if they could come up and maybe receive the resolution.
Are they here?
Come on. Yay.
If I could, let me just say a few words to you all before I give you the proclamation, or the resolution. Having been a judge at this year's event, it was, it was very exciting. And the unique thing about this year was that for the judges, we got to go to every development table. And the participants, I think, had a minute, if I'm not mistaken, to make their elevator pitch on why their app was important for San Mateo County. And if you could, you know, just imagine for a moment, a 13-year-old kid who was 12 when he got honorable mention last year, making a pitch in 60 seconds for his app. It was really incredible. There were, as Donna mentioned, a family team that were there. And just, there was a, just a lot of energy in that room. It was such an incredible experience, and I'm really glad that you invited me to be a judge because being a former, you know, geek. Current geek. It was really just a very enjoyable day. And especially, thank you to all the corporations. You heard the list of the folks that helped us with this. It's pretty amazing that everybody came together around this to encourage the development of these apps. And I hope we can do it. I hope the committee will come back again next year. And on September, was it 21st?
Yes.
We're actually going to be having a presentation, I guess that's what you would call it, of the top apps, and I'm really looking forward to that. And I would encourage any of my colleagues who have a free moment on their calendar to drop by and just chat with the people that are participating. It's a pretty incredible experience. And from that perspective, you know, when you look at all the young people that were there, I mean, young people, the county is in good hands for our future, I think. It was very positive and uplifting. And I just want to thank Donna and all the team for everything that you did. It was an incredible amount of work, and I would say it was a huge success for San Mateo County. So thank you all so much. And with that... Now we'll move on to our regular agenda. And we'll start with item number three, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement for the provision of comprehensive commuter bus services for the term of July 12, 2016, through August 31, 2017. I thought it was Mr. Agamar, but I stand corrected.
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the Board, Mr. Maltby and Mr. Byers. I'm pleased to be before your Board this morning to present an agreement with TransMetro Incorporated for the provision of comprehensive commuter bus services. The Office of Sustainability is proposing to provide these services for a variety of reasons, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to serve as a congestion management strategy, to alleviate parking challenges, both at the medical center and here at County Government Center, as well as a recruitment and retention tool for the county. If approved, this agreement would allow the county to launch a one-year pilot for employee commuter bus services this summer. They would serve the government center as well as the medical center. The routes would pick up at Hayward Bart, Colma Bart, and Milpitas and Union City. And the pilot would accommodate up to 750 riders per day round trip. The Origins Project is actually attributable to county employees. A team of employees submitted the concept to the Employee Hackathon, the Employee Innovation Summit that happened in the fall of 2015. It was the winning idea, and our office was tasked with getting the services online to be able to launch a pilot. We also surveyed county employees to gauge their interest in this service. And over the course of a week, we received almost 2,000 responses to this survey. 75% of the respondents said that they were interested in riding this commuter bus. And Daly City, South San Francisco, Hayward, Union City, Fremont, and San Jose were some of the most requested pickup locations. Interestingly, 65% of employees indicated that they would ride the bus at least four or five days a week. So really, they were seeing this as a way to actually change their commute mode, which is great. That was the intended goal. Over the past months, the commuter bus team has worked with TransMetro. They were selected through an RFP process to really design routes that would serve the maximum number of employees. So we looked at data for where employees who work at government center live and where employees who work at the medical center live. And we tried to design routes that took that into account, as well as existing public transit connections, and then just the viability of pickup locations. You know, you have to have parking or access to other transit modes. The schedules that we've provided in the contract are tentative, but we have the finalized routes that will be available for release shortly to employees so that we can start to raise awareness about this. The buses that would be provided will accommodate 30 passengers each. They'll have wifi, as well as bike racks for employees. And there will also be an app provided by the bus provider so that riders can check on the status of their bus and see where it is along the route. To evaluate the quality of the services that will be provided, we will be offering quarterly surveys, as well as a mystery rider program so that we can see how the drivers are delivering the service. As part of the Commute Alternatives Program suite of offerings, participants in the program will be guaranteed, will be eligible to participate in the guaranteed ride home. So if someone takes the bus to work, then they still have access to get home if there's an emergency. We have a voucher program that's available for all employees who take public transit. And finally, I'd like to share that the program will be funded through a combination of general funds, our existing Commute Alternatives Program funds, as well as employee contributions. We will be offering in the pilot phase a one-month, like a monthly pass, which will cost $125, 75 of which would be funded through the Commute Alternatives Program, and 50 of which would be funded by employees through payroll deductions that they would elect for. The first month of service will be free so that employees have a chance to try out the service and see if they could make it work for their commute. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Comments, questions, Supervisor Tissia?
Just a couple quick questions. What's the capacity of the shuttles that we have there? And how many total could, if everybody just had a seat?
There'll be 750 seats available, yeah, and round trip.
And when you mentioned the monthly pass for the employees, if people want to ride it sporadically, is there just a flat fee that they would pay the day?
We're looking into that. In the pilot, in the initial pilot, we just felt like it was easier to have a single rate structure. So we'll start with the monthly. And one of the survey questions in our first round of surveys will be whether or not there...
No, I think, I think it's a great idea, and we should, and we should do a pilot, and I'm especially interested in the satisfaction surveys that the employees will, will send back to us to, you know, improve it if they can in any way, or just as long as they're, they're pleased with the pickup time and the drop off and all of that.
Supervisor Tissia?
Just one other comment. Although this is a little bit far off, and hopefully this really does work because it would be nice to be able to come from the North County down here without having to drive every day. The one thing I might inform you of, the Colma Bart Park and Ride is set for development. It's not done yet, but it's coming to Samtrans, and there's a developer and a nonprofit looking at that site, so at some point in the North County, you're going to end up, if this is successful, to look for a new location, but that right now is a perfect spot for people to leave their cars.
Right. We've already begun discussions to try to find an alternate location, but we've, I think that the pilot year, we should be covered.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we've already started looking.
Adrienne, I think you're a perfect candidate for the Colma Bart 6:00 AM departure.
(laughing)
Good candidate. I want to be the mystery shopper that leaves at 8:50 AM. Surprise them all.
Supervisor Horsley?
This just might be kind of interesting. You know, one of the things that we, well, at least I hear on the coast side is Pacifica and all of the north coast at Haplem Bay is the traffic, or commute traffic, and everyone who has a job, for the most part, is going on this, the other side of the mountain, basically, onto the bayside, and might be a good role model for Samtrans, because Samtrans system is pretty much like an old line bus system, you know, stops every couple of, you know, every so often. This idea, you know, is, it's similar to what private enterprise has done, and maybe this would be a good role model for Samtrans to try things like this for areas that experience lots of commute problems and have, don't have a lot of, a lot of options, so commend our employees for coming up with the idea.
Supervisor Horsley, the Pacifica, there is a flex bus service in Pacifica that has actually very good ridership.
I know, but, you know, it's, I just, no, I know, I understand that they've done a, they have done some innovation, but I think this might be even a better innovation. One of our problems on the coast side is there's not a lot of parking rights, and that would be, you know, something that we should probably look at, so.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like to express my satisfaction to the Employee Committee and to the Office of Sustainability for really staying with this project. There was a lot involved. And finally, to Samtrans at the end for helping us review the contracts with the contractor before you today, and, and giving us some pointers on how best to manage contracts with the mass providers of transportation.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple of things if I could in closing, that first of all, it speaks to the importance of the Innovation Summit that was mentioned earlier that we had last year. I hope that we continue that effort. There were some really great ideas that came from that, and I'm curious about the buses. Are these, like, is this the operator that does the Facebook buses, for instance?
It's a similar operator. The, I believe Bauer is the provider for Facebook, but yeah, very similar in nature.
The other thing I would ask you to consider, once this gets off and running, is that maybe enter into discussions with the city of Redwood City. Maybe their employees could benefit in some way, and if the ridership isn't there, maybe that's a way to, you know, keep the program viable, is to include others in the effort, of course, after it gets off the ground and you have some experience. Anyway, thank you all, Mr. Egimare-
One last, one last comment?
-and our team. Thank you for, for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Actually, just one, just one other suggestion. You may have done this already, but, you know, John Ford over at commute.org has worked on some kind of tool that helps evaluate the efficiency of the shuttle systems, which commute.org works on together with Samtrans, and I think it also helps calculate CHG reductions, so you might want to give him a call.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I wanted to mention was that we've actually received quite a bit of correspondence from employees overwhelmingly in support of the program, so they're very excited, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Are there public comments?
There's no public comment, but we do need a motion.
Of course we need a motion, Mr. Clerk. Thank you.
Second?
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to item number four, Health System, which is accept the report on the status of Measure A, Augmented Housing Inspection Program Pilot, and B, approve a request to allocate $81,660 in existing funds to expand the Healthy Homes Outreach Efforts in FY1617. Ms. Porche?
Good morning, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malphey, Mr. Byers. This agenda item is a report back on the Augmented Housing Inspection Program Pilot with a request to accept the report and approve a request to reallocate $81,660 in existing funds to expand the Healthy Homes Outreach Efforts for fiscal year 1617. This funding would increase our staff, our current staff of half-time, current unclassified outreach coordinator, to a full-time position for this fiscal year to perform additional outreach for this pilot. As you recall, Environmental Health has a housing inspection program, and we inspect all of the unincorporated apartment complexes and most of the city apartment complexes of four or more units. We use the state health and safety code, and every four years, a routine inspection is performed. Historically, approximately 50% of the buildings received additional inspections during the four-year cycle. These nonroutine inspections were triggered by staff follow-up on identified issues as well as tenant-initiated complaints. During the last four-year inspection cycle, 10% of the apartment buildings received at least four inspections, including routines, re-inspections, and tenant-generated complaint investigations. In an effort to reduce the ongoing and recurring issues at these properties, they were selected for this pilot. They're distributed throughout the county, as you can see in the map on the screen. The Measure A Housing Program Pilot added one housing inspector and half of an outreach coordinator position, who are focusing on the 348 units, the 10% of our inventory. The pilot has been providing enhanced and more frequent inspections for the 10% of the apartment buildings that have historically required more inspection oversight. The funds also enhance compliance with emphasis on integrated pest management, a combination of enhanced education and outreach to tenants and landlords, and more direct involvement by inspectors in violation resolution to ensure compliance is reached in a timely manner. I would like to thank our Environmental Health Housing staff for their dedication and enthusiasm for this project. A lot has been accomplished in the last six months, and in fact, the last nine months, because last fall, immediately after your board approved this, we hit the ground running and modified our entire inspection program for this pilot, and we've accomplished a lot. January to April of 2016, all of the inspections for this pilot were finished, 348 inspections, routine inspections, and of those 348, 70% or 244 required re-inspections. As of June 30th, at least one reinspection was performed at all of the properties requiring reinspection, and all but 24 buildings have returned to compliance, meaning all of the violations for all of them but 24 were resolved. Listed above are the top five cited violation categories in order of frequency cited. Vermin and pest exclusion examples include holes in walls and overgrown vegetation. Overall exterior maintenance violation categories included discarded items and overflowing dumpsters. Weather protection included examples of broken windows. General exterior violations included things like structural integrity, peeling paint, and broken gutters. And fire safety violations included blocked exit routes and non-working fire extinguishers or expired fire extinguishers. Regarding the number of documented violations, while there were 1,194 documented violations for this pilot, the number was not significantly higher than those identified in the previous four-year inspection cycle. Historically, our staff identified the violations and dealt with the major violations requiring immediate correction, while minor violations, such as a broken screen, were included in the building's routine maintenance schedule and were slated to be evaluated during the next routine inspection cycle. The buildings in this pilot have short deadlines for completing all of the repairs, including the minor ones, and re-inspections are being performed for every violation to ensure compliance. What we are looking for in this pilot, a decreased number of violations between routine inspections. We're using the inspections from this year as our baseline, and we're looking for a substantial decrease in the number of violations for subsequent years in the routine inspections. We're also looking for a decrease in the number of complaints and re-inspections in between the routine inspections. We're also tracking our time to determine how long it is taking us to do the inspection, how long it is taking us to gain compliance, so that we can evaluate it down the road for potential changes to our overall program. As of last Thursday, there are 227 outstanding violations, so 80% of the violations identified in the pilot inspections have been corrected. Of those two, of those 227, many of them require building contractors, building permits, or multiple site visits from pest control companies, and many of the 227 are actually minor violations at those buildings that have the more significant, more complex violations, and our staff have not been out to do the re-inspections until the major violations are corrected. So while our staff have had to charge re-inspection fees at several buildings that have required multiple site visits to check for the compliance, at this time, all apartment buildings with outstanding violations are currently working on the issues and working with our staff to resolve them. Deadlines are in place, and staff have been working with property management and other agencies such as building departments and fire departments to achieve resolution for the outstanding violations. Our half-time community outreach coordinator has been visiting individual apartment units with observed pest issues or as a result of tenant complaints. She's helping tenants prepare for pest control treatment, as well as providing education regarding the contributing factors that attract pests, as well as excessive moisture, among other things. She's developing and has been distributing two different but similar messages to both tenants and landlords. She's setting up targeted online Healthy Homes advertising when members of the community search in their Google search engines or they're being for key search words such as healthy homes, vector issues, vermin, et cetera. She's distributing our Healthy Homes material through the Health Systems Facebook page, the North Fair Oaks Facebook page, and is reaching out to cities to encourage them to include links to our Healthy Homes documents. With respect to community events, the North Fair Oaks Research, or, sorry, the North Fair Oaks Resource Fair is being planned for August, and she's reaching out to and sharing resources with other government agencies and nonprofits, such as the Daly City Partnership, the Tri-County Apartment Association, and clergy communities such as those in the city of San Mateo. While our inspection staff work on the remaining outstanding issues, more opportunities have presented themselves for our outreach coordinator, and we would like for, we would like for additional staffing to more directly work with the stakeholders and directly with tenants. We believe that there is quite a bit more to be done this year, and we're requesting an additional half-time position for the coordinator. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Porche. Questions, comments? Supervisor Tissia?
Just a quick question. Obviously, that's a lot of inspections you made, and it sounds like you're making great progress. I'm sort of curious, what was the level of cooperation by the landlords? Was it difficult, or did they kind of get that we're really, this is something we're being very aggressive about?
There, there is cooperation, and there's actually quite a bit of enthusiasm about our outreach strategies, and they've been very agreeable to working with us at this point.
That's great. Supervisor Pine?
I thank you for the report, and so you're, you're asking for an additional half-time person, half-time FTE, if I understand?
Yes, for the outreach coordinator.
Right, and would that be on an ongoing basis, or just until we catch up, or?
This is for fiscal year 1617, so this, this next fiscal year.
For that one year, okay.
Thank you. Supervisor Horsley?
I don't have any questions. I'm ready to make the motion to accept the report on the status of Measure A, Augmented Housing Inspection Program, and to approve the request to allocate $81,660 in existing funds to expand the Healthy Home Outreach Efforts. Before we take a vote, could I ask you a couple of questions? Sorry.
Sure.
On that chart that where you showed District 1, District 2, District 3, District 4, District 5, and then the numbers, are those numbers the total pool of apartment buildings in those districts, or is that inspections, or?
Those are the apartment buildings that were identified for the pilot-
I see.
-in each of the districts.
Okay. Another quick question. What's the fee for re-inspection?
It's an hourly rate, and I believe it is $167.
And then, fine, just two more things quickly. The fifth most common violation were fire safety violations?
Yes.
And can you just talk for a minute about what those might have been, and is there one district that's, where that's more common than others?
I don't know whether there's one district that it's more common than in others, but we're seeing a lot of expired fire extinguishers, and again, blocked exits.
So it's not fire sprinkler systems and-
No.
-those kinds of things. Okay. And then, did you have any reports of any adverse impacts? In other words, did you have a report of someone being evicted as a result of an inspection?
We have not received any direct reports. There's often conversations about, you know, our inspection process, but we have not received any direct reports as a result.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have another quick comment.
Supervisor Tissia?
When you go into each of these units, do we require fire, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, and so we're insisting that that happens in each and every one of them that we've inspected?
Yes, we, we do. The apartment units that we go into that we're, we're permitted to inspect, we evaluate those, and that is one of the, those are the things that we look for, and it's also a reminder to the building managers that it's required in all of the units, even if we don't get into them.
And as part of the outreach, and maybe you're already doing this, it would be probably a good idea that to remind people, when it's daylight savings times, that's the time to change batteries and make sure they're all up and operating. It's one thing to put them in, and then everybody forgets about them, and, you know, they get the little beep, they take the batteries out, and there we are, without a smoke alarm, so.
They always beep in the middle of the night, too.
And Don is an expert on the beeping in the middle of the night.
That's right. All right, so thank you for the report. Thank you to the outreach team. It's, the work is sincerely appreciated. There's been a motion in a second. Supervisor Horsley, that was a motion for A and B, yeah?
Yes, it was.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Carries? Thank you very much. That was item number four. Now we move to item number five, which is a public works item. It's a resolution authorizing the codification of existing no-parking zones on the east side of Perrisima Creek Road. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malphey and Mr. Byers. We have a PowerPoint with this presentation. The, the item in question was, was actually brought about as, through a petition from residents that live near Perrisima Creek Road, and specifically near the mid-peninsula open space parking lot that is the trailhead to the Perrisima Creek Trail. This is a drawing that shows-
those, and that is one of the, those are the things that we look for. And it's also a reminder to the building managers that it's required in all of the units, even if we don't get into them.
And as part of the outreach, and maybe you're already doing this, it would be probably a good idea that to remind people when it's daylight savings time, that's the time to change batteries and make sure they're all up and operating. It's one thing to put them in, and then everybody forgets about them, and, you know, they get the little beep, they take the batteries out, and there we are without a smoke alarm.
They always beep in the middle of the night, too.
And Don is an expert on the beeping in the middle of the night.
That's right. All right, so thank you for the report. Thank you to the outreach team. It's, the work is sincerely appreciated. There's been a motion in a second. Supervisor Horsley, that was a motion for A and B? Yeah?
Yes, it was.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No? Carries? Thank you very much. That was item number four. Now, we move to item number five, which is a public works item. It's a resolution authorizing the codification of existing no parking zones on the east side of Parrisima Creek Road. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, President Slocum, members of the board, Mr. Malpe and Mr. Byers. We have a PowerPoint with this presentation. The, the item in question was, was actually brought about as, through a petition from residents that live near Parrisima Creek Road and specifically near the mid peninsula open space parking lot that is the trailhead to the Parrisima Creek Trail. This is a drawing that shows a set of maps for the district, but the entrance that we're talking about is the one on the coast side accessible from Highway One. There's two roads that lead to that trailhead. One is Higgins Canyon, and the other is Parrisima Creek Road. On the east side of the roadway, there are actually no parking signs there currently. However, in our research, we found that there is no available record of approval of that no parking zone. So essentially, we're coming to your board to codify the signs that are already in place. We're talking about approximately 530 feet of no parking zone on the east side of the road. This is a picture of the trailhead looking towards the access roadways leading in there. The request is really based upon access from the community, particularly in, in regard to public safety. The road leading to the park is quite narrow. As you can see, here's a no parking sign that's there without an ordinance to be able to enforce it. But the district did contact the local fire service provider, because the original request was to prohibit parking on both sides of the street. And the local fire provider told us that if we prohibit parking on one side of the street, that would be adequate for them to have access to the area, and it also is beneficial to the park users in that they have some more room to park. The parking lot that they use now only has spots for seven cars, and as you, you know, well know, during the summertime, there's quite a bit of use on these trails. This is just another image showing the, the narrowness of this roadway. It's, it's very tight. The open space rangers actually have the ability to enforce parking regulations subject to approval by your board, because you have the authority to institute parking restrictions on county roads. So enforcement can be done both by the open space rangers as well as local law enforcement. We did receive petitions, or the district received petitions. The board report states there was 25, there's actually 49 folks that sent petitions on that. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Questions, comments?
Just a quick question, Mr. Porter. When you say open space rangers, are you referring to our park rangers?
It's actually the mid peninsula
The mid peninsula.
district. Yeah, MidPen has the ability.
I'll make the motion to authorize the codification of existing no parking zones on the east side of Parrisima Creek Road to allow proper access for vehicles and emergency response vehicles.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Motion carries. We're going to move on to item number six, which is a report by the county manager on revenue enhancement study session, but I think this is a good time to take maybe a five-minute break. There probably will be a lot of speakers on this item, so if we could, we'll reconvene at 20 after. Thank you. There we go. We are reconvened. We're gonna, going to move to item number six. County manager report back from the revenue enhancement study session. Mr. Malpe?
Mr. President, members of the board?
Can I just make one quick comment, just as an FYI for the board? We do have with us today our longstanding bond, longstanding bond counsel of the county, John Palmer of the Oric Firm. He's the tall gentleman to my left over here, and he's here just in case any, if any questions arise around sort of mechanics of bonds or bond financing, so just, just an FYI.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here also. Mr. Malpe?
Mr. President, as you indicated, this is a follow-up to your item on the board's agenda for June 28 regarding revenue, potential revenue enhancements. At that study session, your board requested that the staff obtain polling results for one, affordable housing bond measures of less than 500,000, 500 million, rather, and two, an extension of the existing Measure A sales tax for a period of less than 30 years. Pursuant to that request, we contacted Gavi Research. Brian is here today to present the results of that polling. The survey tested two bond amounts, one in the amount of 295 million, one in the amount of 345 million for potential affordable housing bond measure, and also, they tested the extension of Measure A for a period of 10 years and for a period of 20 years. As the board may recall, the original survey included a 30-year extension. As I indicated, Mr. Gavi is here and prepared to present the survey results, and then we will answer any questions and take any direction that the board may provide regarding either one of these measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Pleased to be here to talk about the results of this survey that the county manager alluded to. It's a brief survey, so we'll dive right into it. As the county manager alluded, we were commissioned to conduct a survey to assess support for potential sales tax extension, as well as to look at two bond measures. We also looked at the duration of the sales tax measure, and we'll see that in a moment. There's, of course, a variety of demographic and behavioral information that we use to weight the data to make sure it is accurate and reflective of the likely voter universe. In terms of the methodology, this was a telephone and online survey. The universe was 263,000 likely November 2016 voters in the county that we expect to be voting on this kind of measure. We were in the field with the online portion from July 1 through the 5, and then we did phone interviews after the 4th of July holiday. Because it is a very brief survey and split sample in nature, it was only three minutes. The total sample size was 1,216 completed interviews. 610 of those were online, 181 were via cellphone, and 425 were via landlines. Obviously, the world is changing very quickly, and landlines are becoming, are being abandoned at a dizzying pace for all the obvious reasons. We also had split samples, which you'll see, to look at each of the various ballot questions without one question influencing the next question. So, sales tax was split sample A, one of the bonds was split sample B, one of the bonds was split sample C. So we have the 399, 400, and 417 sample sizes for each of those splits, and that gives us an error rate overall of 2.8, but again, more relevant of each split at 4.9, 4.9, and 4.8, round all of those to 5.0 when you're looking at these numbers. Jumping into the key findings, the first question, as I mentioned, was the support for the sales tax. Again, this is the split sample, so people that took this split only heard about sales tax, not about bonds, and that gives you, we don't have any spillover effect from one to the other that might impact the numbers. The way we look at this question, which you see in the box on the right-hand side of the slide for viability, is we add the probably indefinitely yes together, and when we're above the target rate that we need to hit for a measure, in this case, a simple majority, we determine that that's viable to be on the ballot. Clearly, we have 70.3% here. That's well above the simple majority necessary for a general sales tax extension. This is higher than the 63% that we showed you that Mr. Barnes presented a couple weeks ago, but the difference is notable. This is a half-cent extension. That was a increase of a half cent, an extension of the term to 30 years. So this is not a tax increase, it's simply an extension for 20 years. We're also, not only 70% yes, but we're 19% no, 11% don't know. So again, for a simple majority measure with a 5% error rate, this is definitely viable. Worst case is at 65%. That's 15 points above what we need to be successful with this kind of measure. The next question was still on the sales tax portion, and this was a fallback question to see, well, what happens if they're not supportive of 20 years? What about 10 years? The people that were asked this question were not definitely yes in the first question, because we assume that if you're definitely yes at 20, you're going to be supportive at 10. But then we add the two back together, and that's what you see here. At 10 years, support goes up to 73%. That's what you'd expect to see. It's not statistically significant, because we'd need to see about a 10% shift for it to be significant, but it, but it is certainly what you would expect to see with a shorter duration. But I don't think that, based on the previous question, that we need to be going at a lower rate from the, for the voters, because they're supportive at the 20-year half-cent extension rate. Next question was our second sample, and this is the $340 million bond measure. So this is different than what we presented before. That was a $500 million bond measure. That also had different wording, which was a little more challenging for bond measures. This is a little more traditional in terms of its wording, so there are two real differences, the, the amount, and this one not being quite as cumbersome. Here, we've got 62.8% yes, 23.8% no, and 13% don't know. That compares with that $500 million bond at 57.7. Again, I think the difference between the two of these, while not statistically significant, it's going the direction I would have hypothesized based, again, on the difference in the wording as well as the dollar amount. The next question was, again, the third split, and this is still a bond measure. This one is at $295 million and is at 60.8% yes, 26% no, and 13% don't know. People will instantly say, well, why if it's less, do they support it at a lower level? The two of these are really statistically insignificant. The difference is 2%, and with 5% error rate plus or minus, we really shouldn't look at these as being different. We should just say there is no difference. We've seen that over and over again in San Mateo County, particularly at the community college level, where they've had large sample sizes, which have afforded us to do split samples similar to this. Whether we are doing 280 million or 480 million dollar bonds, there's just no difference statistically. People don't know what that means to their budget or their lives. It's that they're just big numbers. There might be a psychological ceiling between 495 and 500 million, and the psychological ceiling is where you cross that $1995 to $20 level, or the 495 million to 500 million level. But I don't, there clearly isn't at these lower amounts. In summary, then, the survey certainly revealed a very strong base of voter support for a half-cent 20-year sales tax extension of Measure A. The support does increase, as we saw numerically for the 10-year sales tax, but it's just not statistically significant. Support for the two, 345 and 295 million dollar bond measures didn't reach the 2/3 threshold that you need for a general obligation bond, and in the vast majority of cases, while there's an error rate, and you could argue that we could get to 2/3 if you add the error rate on top of the support, it almost never happens that way. In reality, we see that we're, we win on the low side of the error rate rather than on the high side, and that's important to note. So in conclusion, a sales tax extension stands a good chance of success, but it does assume that there's a well-executed and independent campaign coalescing to support the measure. Obviously, that's something that can't be done by the county, but would have to be done independently. That concludes the presentation. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have about the data.
Thank you, Mr. Gavi. Questions? Supervisor Pine, would you like to start?
I think I just had, had one. In terms of the voters that you polled, I mean, of course, in the November election, it's the election where everyone, you know, everyone votes is whatever, 75% participation. But if I, if I remember, you, your pool was not that pool. Your pool was people that you thought would power their way far enough down the ballot?
It's slightly smaller, that's correct. If you look at Measure A in 2012, and I don't have the numbers off right here in front of me, but off the top of my head, it was about 255,000. If you look at one of the tax measures that was on the ballot in November 2008, it got about the same number. So we're actually a little bit higher than that, but we're not as high as the number of people that will cast ballots for president. I mean, what will happen, and you can look at, President Slocum knows this better than anybody, you can look at the number of people that vote for president, and then everything else is less than that, because there's a drop-off.
So you took that into account?
So we took that into account, right.
Supervisor Tissia?
Just a quick question. Mr. Gavi, I know you've done a lot of polling over time, and I'm sort of curious, I mean, it's unfortunate the bond measure doesn't really rise to the top. Have you ever seen a situation where a bond measure polled, what I'd say is not poorly, but not as well enough to actually pass, that it actually, with some outreach and things that could actually pass, or is this a pretty low number to feel even slightly comfortable in recommending it?
I think this is a low number to feel, feel comfortable recommending it. I mean, if you look at the history of school bonds, that's instructive, I think. When it was 2/3 in the 90s and the 80s, we didn't do many school bonds. When the threshold was lowered to 55%, all of a sudden, there were lots of school bonds on the ballot, and certainly, we've done dozens here. And, and that 2/3 threshold is hard to get to, to start with. It's hard to get to when your polling doesn't show your, even at that level.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Grum?
Mr. Gavi, when we did the first Measure A, we, we had it be a 10-year tax. Is there a magic number or any sort of statistics on when it's the proper time to ask the voters to renew it?
There certainly isn't statistically. There have been numerous parcel taxes, particularly for schools mostly. There have been a number of utility taxes, TOTs, and sales taxes to lesser extent for cities, which have done more of those measures, that get renewed before they expire. So that's not unusual. It's not common because of the election cycles that most of these go through.
But this, ours is just a couple of years old.
Right.
And so I'm just, you know, curious whether it's, it should, it's, it's six years out or eight years out, you know, is there a magic number?
The magic number really relates, again, to the election cycle. If you're likely, if you were successful in a presidential election, that's probably the right election to redo it in, so you probably wouldn't do six years, you'd do four years, or eight years, or 12 years. Obviously, for Measure A, 12 years doesn't work, so we would be probably at the latest back in the presidential election of 2020. But you wouldn't be the only agency that has done earlier than that in an effort to get it extended.
Thank you.
And also give yourself a fallback, too. Some, some agencies do it for that purpose alone, just may want to have two bites of the apple.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to that one?
Sure.
So, Mr. Gavi, obviously, this is something you can't, we haven't polled, but if we didn't do it this time, and we waited to the gubernatorial election two years out, then it would be six years instead of four years into the Measure A, the initial Measure A duration. Now, that's a, as we know, a different voting pool, and I, if, you know, if you were to poll it then, I bet that 72% probably comes down somewhat. Would you, were you willing to speculate as how much it would come down?
If the election were held today, which of course has countered your question, we did look at the voting propensity, and it does come down just a little bit. It comes down to, into the 60s, actually 68% for the highest percentage right now among this universe. So it's, we're looking at a smaller subset of the 400 that we've got here based on voting propensity, so we can sort of project 2018 based on that. We get 68% instead of 70%. Statistically, they're insignificant, the difference. And that's probably a worst-case scenario, too, where we're being pretty restrictive. We don't know exactly what the turnout, who's going to be on the ballot, what the turnout's going to be. Certainly, gubernatorial elections have had large differences in turnout. The 2014 election was the lowest turnout in history for a gubernatorial election. Obviously, there was an incumbent, Governor Brown, that was going to be re-elected, and that had a big impact on that. We don't know exactly who the candidates were going to be in two years, so. And, and we also don't know the economy, so there are a lot of variables. If the election were today, I would say we'd win at just a slightly lower level than we would win if we put it on the ballot in 16.
Right, thank you.
So if, Mr. Gavi, if in 2018, if the economy is, as we, I think there's some prediction that it's going to slow down, will that improve our chances of passing, or not?
No, I think it'll make it harder.
Yeah.
Yeah. It just depends on what that slowdown looks like.
Okay. And the other, what, some have suggested that because this is maybe a historic election, that would that, do you think that may change your polling at all, because it's a?
No, I don't think so. I think that changes the top of the ticket. I think that changes the presidential election. You know, whether we were looking at the presidential where Barack Obama ran the first time, we had about 255, 260,000 people that voted on tax measures in San Mateo County. In 2012, where he was running for reelection, we had the same thing. You know, arguably, those are both historic elections, but the first one was more historic, and yet the, the vote cast for the ballot measures didn't really change. And so I wouldn't expect this election to change the ballot measure vote. It may change the presidential vote, but probably not. It may change the presidential vote, but probably not.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments?
I'm just curious, although I don't know if you're necessarily going to know that answer. On our ballot for the presidential election, I'm sort of curious how many measures we're going to have. It, it may not be a lot. I mean, in like San Francisco, they have thirty or forty measures, so getting down the ballot could be difficult. In our case, I don't know that we have that many things.
And where do the, where do the state measures go, though? There's going to be a lot of those.
There's something like thirty or twenty state measures potentially?
Oh, there are, okay.
I just heard seventeen is the number that...
I don't know if I had or behind those.
Okay. I was just curious, you know, what does that mean to us?
It's a lot, yeah. I mean, it's a huge number, and that's why there's the drop-off that we see.
And I guess, I mean, I'm obviously willing to support the twenty-year, but I do think it's going to require a lot of outreach in the community because it is a down-ballot measure. And, you know, you never really, you don't want it to fail, you know, because you, yes, you do get a second bite of the apple, but I think it's much stronger. But I, I do think, you know, and I know we're going to hear from a lot of our housing advocates, but at the end of the day, having something stretched out gives us a little more certainty as to what we can do in the area of housing, transportation, you name the different issues. Whereas if, you know, even in four years, if we did it again, or two years, and it didn't pass, you know, we're still leaving ourselves with some uncertainty. So I do think the polling looks, this is pretty, pretty good here from what I, in past polls I've seen for measures that actually passed. But I certainly can't wait to hear from our housing advocates.
So are there other comments, supervisors? Okay, so can we move to public comment?
Yes.
The first speaker is Navid Safipour, followed by Edward Evans.
I didn't expect me first. Hi, my name's Navid Safipour. I'm currently serving as president of the Peninsula Young Democrats. Even though that includes Democrats, I'm here more taking the young perspective more than anything else. Because we, we as a club have focused on housing issues in general, and we did pass a resolution about it after having a number of speakers investigating the issue quite in-depth. To make, to shorten that bit of my commentary, I guess, while there's a need for all kinds of housing, that has to include affordable housing, and there isn't the funding for that right now. So if we don't at least try to go for a bond measure like this, we're, we're essentially doing nothing for a huge part of the community here. I did also want to speak, because I am a little bit of a political junkie, to some of the questions about polling and the electorate. While the questions about his, this being a historical election are important, I think we also need to consider that there's no Republican Senate candidate on the ballot, and the Republican presidential candidate is one that in this area might not inspire certain people to go to the polls, who would otherwise be there voting against tax measures. So this is a unique opportunity to have an electorate where there's disproportionate Hispanic turnout as well. And I would be interested to know the cross tabs for Hispanics and young people in the polling that was done on the affordable housing measure, because if the sample included percentages that don't reflect the actual electorate in the end with a higher Hispanic voter turnout, that could have implications on whether or not a housing, affordable housing bond could pass. So thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Evans, followed by Michael Lane.
Morning, President Slocum, Board of Supervisors. My name is Ed Evans. I'm with Carpenter's Local Two Seventeen. I'm here to voice our support for a bond measure, or at the very least, the half-cent sales tax extension. We, we agree with, with several of the folks in the room that there's a serious shortage of affordable housing in the county. We know that the, once the money is, is collected, that it needs some safeguards, and we want to be sure that you understand the, the serious problem in the construction industry, particularly the affordable housing industry. A lot of affordable housing is built off the backs of exploited workers. There's an underground economy that includes cheating, hours shaving, payroll fraud, coyoteism. And when exploited workers are brought in from over the hills and the valleys, and they're paid paltry wages and they're cheated, they take that money home to their communities, and it's lost to this county forever. You don't get the money back in sales taxes and property taxes, and our vendors and our, our business owners don't, don't reap those rewards back. So I would like to ask you, if there is a bond measure, please include language, strong language on joint apprenticeship programs to keep our young people in this county involved and to help us keep bringing them into the middle class. Pre-qualification of general contractors to make sure you're getting the most scrupulous general contractors. And let's try to keep the construction dollars in, in our county. And I would just leave with this. The best tradespeople with whom to build affordable housing are those local tradespeople who don't need affordable housing. Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you. Mr. Lane.
We have Michael Lane, followed by John Testor.
Great. President Slocum, members, Michael Lane with the nonprofit Housing Association of Northern California and the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We want to express our gratitude to you for, for bringing this forward with the revenue enhancement and all the work that you and staff have done on this. As you know, a consistent, ongoing source of funding for affordable housing is absolutely critical to really develop that kind of finance system that we need, that ecosystem, to really develop a pipeline and really have a measurable impact and to address the need that we see out there. As you know, this is a key action item, both for the Jobs Housing Gap Task Force, as well as the Housing Leadership Council Board of Directors and our local residents. As we saw from the polling, this, voters have continued to say that this is the number-one issue, even above transportation, public safety, and other issues that historically we've seen with very high poll results. Economic evictions are fraying the fabric of our communities, and we're really starting to feel this now, and the damage that's being done to families. And, and I think that's why this issue has risen to the top of voter concerns. The San Mateo County way is to care for each other and to respond to the need. I know you, you are all dedicated to do that, and we stand ready to work with you to get this done and to really address this issue head-on. Now is the time for bold action commensurate with the scale of the problem. We urge you to move forward now with a plan to increase funding for affordable housing. The county has demonstrated tremendous leadership on this issue, and you have that unique role in the county to be able to work with our, our local jurisdictions, our incorporated cities, to be able to find the right sites and to provide the upfront funding that will allow us to tap into other resources at the state and federal levels. Now is the time for this next step. People are counting on us to get this right, and we stand ready and willing to work with you on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
John Testor, followed by Mary Mertog.
Thank you. My name is John Testor. I'm a resident of San Mateo. I've been a homeowner in San Mateo for over thirty years. I've seen many changes, and particularly professionally, I'm an insurance broker, and I work with developers of affordable housing, most of whom are nonprofits, and they provide a social benefit that is wider and deeper than the housing itself. But I've become very aware of the displacement that's occurring regularly as those who serve our community in a variety of service jobs and positions are moving out of the area because they can't afford to live here. I'm also active in my church, First Presbyterian Church of San Mateo, and with discussions of another, number of people in the faith community, we are very aware of the displacement and what it's doing to our communities. I also know many people, including people in our own church community, who are living in substandard housing, including adapted garages and so forth, families of four and five people living in, in all units because they cannot afford adequate housing. Any increase of services, the cost of services, I think, will be more significant than the cost to support a sales tax or bonds or any other kind of funding that can come from the county. This cost to society can, can far outweigh the individual costs that we as homeowners and consumers in the county that will spend to bring affordable housing into our community. My experience is that, for the most part, the people who develop affordable housing do not really get rich in doing so. But the housing that they provide enriches the community and improves the quality of life. Thank you.
Mary Mertog, followed by Diana Reddy.
Good morning, and thank you for all the hard work you've already done on this issue. I'm with the Ecumenical Association for Housing, which is a forty-eight-year-old regional nonprofit founded in Marin. We work throughout the Bay Area and are the proud co-owners of sixty-unit development for homeless vets in Menlo Park, which recently rented up. I've been with this job for thirty years, and I think I describe every year of that as having been a housing crisis. We've run out of words for crisis, but current times exceed that by a measurable amount. The, the level of displacement, it's like a wave of displacement that is rippling throughout the entire Bay Area, from San Francisco, the Peninsula, and South Bay, up the East Bay, to the point where Richmond is debating rent control, and young would-be homeowners are just leaving the state entirely or moving to Sacramento farther out. We're displacing our children and our grandchildren at a hideous rate, and our employees, and there are just tragic stories left, right, and center. So we are here to support whatever is the most expedient way to add funding for affordable housing. Eligible sites are being lost to for-profit developers left, right, and center, and I think the nonprofit community has done a very good job of demonstrating that we can build very high-quality housing and maintain it as affordable permanently, along with a lot of very excellent supportive services that help people get out of poverty through all kinds of educational and supportive programs, which we are delighted to have the opportunity to provide. So if the tax measure is a, a better route than a bond, whatever is most likely to pass and what's going to be an historic election is what we would support, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Diana Reddy, followed by Matt Franklin.
President and Board members, the, I'm Diana Reddy, a housing advocate for the protection and creation of affordable housing. This week, I'm working on two evictions and a, an eight-unit building where the rent has exceeded for low-income seniors and families what those residents can manage. Thank you for all that you've done in the past to support affordable housing. Unfortunately, it has taken decades to get us into this housing crisis. I agree that that word somehow, you know, runs hollow because I've been using that word for a long time. But it will take decades to correct it, to even make a real impact. And the stars are currently aligned with a high voter turnout presidential election, an extremely high public sensitivity to the need for affordable housing, which creates an opportunity for you to do something extraordinary. I urge you to consider a revenue enhancement that will support future affordable housing that will, that is so desperately needed right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Matt Franklin, followed by Leora Tonvatko.
Morning, President Slocum, members of the board. Matt Franklin, Mid-Penn Housing. Thank you for this brief opportunity to offer just a few thoughts. I mostly just want to thank you for your continued leadership on this issue, and also to thank Mr. Malpia and Mr. Byers for their work on this as well. I appreciate that this continues to be a bit complicated as far as the, the different options and identify the, the right route forward, and appreciate your efforts to, to continue to push, to find ways to be responsive to the voters. They are telling us loud and clear and consistently that they see this, this crisis in their lives every day and that it's the most urgent issue on their minds for us to address. As, as you look at the sales tax option, I would encourage you to try to explore ways to, to front-load the availability of funding for housing. The crisis is now. I think we need to continue to try to be creative, to try to think about how to really significantly move the needle in terms of funding. You've heard from others here, there's a lot of experience and capacity just in this room alone that could, could absorb quite a bit more money and put it to great effect very quickly. I do think that, to Supervisor Tissier's comments, the longer twenty-year period could really afford a lot of options in this regard. Added on to the existing six or seven years left, we might even be able to find a way to bond against that, to generate revenue today. And Shirley, her comments about everyone's ability, yours as far as the other county needs, ours in terms of funding, the, the certainty of that over a long period of time would just, I think, reap great benefit to the work that we've been doing collectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Leora Tonvatko, followed by Nathan Ho.
Hi, Board. I'm Leora Tonvatko. Thank you for your time this afternoon. I'm here to support any sort of dedicated stream of revenue to, to affordable housing. I don't know exactly what the solution is if there isn't a bond measure, but I do know that, given the, the economic success of the Bay Area at this time, it's really an important thing that we need to take care of. I've lived in San Mateo County for eighteen years, and honestly, the only reason that I can still live here is because of the support of my parents. And I'm, you know, tired of my friends moving away to, to Texas or to Portland where they can, you know, have a life that they've, that they've thought that they would have by the time they were twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-five. And I have many friends here who are in their early thirties, and they have, you know, five housemates. And that, that sort of situation is, is not, it's just, it's, it's a, it's an outcome of the housing crisis that everyone's talking about. It's definitely a diversion from, from the thing, from the way that our parents were when they, you know, moved here and other folks who, in the past, were able to come and, and afford to live here. So, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of things happening in this current election, and I know that, that there's a lot of support for affordable housing and a lot of energy out there to go out and vote. But I, but I do think that this crisis requires some local action and that we can't rely on the state or the federal government to, to help, to help us too much in our very unique Bay Area situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Ho, followed by Kate Comfort-Harr.
Good morning. Thank you for the time, and just thank you for your leadership and your, your thoughtful consideration of how to explore affordable housing solutions here in the county. My name is Nathan Ho. I do our policy and communications for Eden Housing. We're the second-oldest nonprofit affordable housing developer and manager in California, second to EAH up in the Marne. We got our start in Hayward, just across the bridge, and we, the need for our work is overwhelming. We currently manage eighty-two hundred affordable rental apartment homes, and we have, just on Eden's waitlist, over twenty thousand households across California. So we have, those eighty-two hundred units are in a hundred and thirty affordable communities throughout California, and I echo the, the support of my nonprofit developer colleagues. I won't echo them specifically, but just want to say that we also support that. The remainder of my time, just wanted to share one story. My name is out there on the Eden website, and so I get calls directly from residents of the Bay Area of, across California, and they're looking for housing. And one in particular, I was listening to voicemails last week, and this one stood out, just the sound of desperation in her voice. Her name was Alexis, and she is a single mother who works three jobs, and she's just looking for a home. She said that she and her small daughter will be in her car very soon, living in her car, and it just touched me. And I was listening aloud on speakerphone at home, and my wife was sitting right next to me, and she looked at me just with tears well in her eyes, and she said, "You've got to help her. You've got to help her." So Eden, you know, we're doing the best we can with the resource that we have, but the local resources attract and leverage the state and federal resources that come in. So just wanted to say thank you again for your, your consideration, your leadership.
Thank you.
Kate, Kate Comfort-Harr, followed by Grace Chan.
Good morning. I am Kate Comfort-Harr, Executive Director of Hip Housing.
I am Kate Comfort-Harr, Executive Director of Hip Housing, and we specialize in creative affordable housing solutions throughout San Mateo County, something that's getting harder and harder to do every day. Yesterday, in our office, desperate for housing, we had a local home health care aide, a substitute teacher, a matron D., and an emancipating foster care youth. Anything that we can do to sustain or increase the revenue that will expand the inventory of affordable housing is going to help everyone. It's going to benefit all of us in San Mateo County. There are new opportunities coming down the pike every day if we have the funding to be able to jump on them. This afternoon, I'm having lunch with the seller of our newly acquired Cypress property. He wants to do another project to make sure that we can help mitigate the displacement that's happening in this county. One last thing I'd like to say, you know, I'm very much in support of an extension of Measure A. It sounds like that's a great option, especially at this particular moment. But I'd also, on my way out here, like to thank this board for doing so much to really address this problem and to look at creative solutions and work with the public, the private, and the nonprofit sector together. The discussions we've had in the task force have been amazing, and the tone in this county has changed dramatically since that task force began, so the Housing Jobs Task Force. One last thing I'd like to say on behalf of Hip Housing, all of us, my board and everyone, I'd like to give a major, huge shout-out to our favorite deputy sheriff, Carlos Bolaños. So, thank you.
Grace Chan, followed by Monica Olson.
Good morning, board members. My name is Grace Chan, and I'm here today on behalf of Green Belt Alliance, and I'm also a resident of the city of San Mateo. Green Belt Alliance works to protect the region's open spaces and to ensure neighborhoods within our cities are amazing places for everyone. We have long recognized negative impacts that the lack of affordable homes in desirable neighborhoods near job centers has on both people and the planet. High housing costs and the threat of displacement place significant burdens on low-income individuals and families. Green Belt Alliance supports the right development in the right places, homes we can all afford, and walkable neighborhoods, near job centers, transportation options, and other amenities. Green Belt Alliance strongly supports new funding for affordable housing. We urge this Board of Supervisors to advance multiple policy proposals to secure funding for affordable homes. On another note, I'm currently in college, and by the time that I would want to settle down and raise a family, if my parents have sold their home in San Mateo, it would be very difficult for me to move back to the Bay Area in an apartment or a home. And so I personally would also like to have affordable housing options. Thank you.
Monica Olson, followed by Bruce Ives.
Thank you for considering this important issue. And I'm from Pacifica, where we have worked since the late '90s with the faith communities to get affordable housing in. Recently, at our city council meetings, the intent was to try to control the rents, which are now $3,000 and rising. We're losing teachers. The school district has been decimated. We did a poll of the students, and the anxiety over high living costs was first place. And the faith communities are just willing and ready to go for affordable housing, and we thank you that you would consider helping our city to vote in favor of any of the projects that stand wanting.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is Mr. Bruce Ives.
President Slocum, members of the Board, good morning. My name is Bruce Ives. I'm the CEO of Life Moves. We operate, as you know, six facilities in San Mateo County that are working to return homeless families and individuals to stable housing and self-sufficiency. I also had the privilege of serving on the Jobs Housing Task Force. At Life Moves, we don't develop permanent housing, but we're absolutely reliant on the availability of affordable housing options in our communities for our clients. They're the ones who do all the hard work while they're with us in our shelters to turn their lives around, to get back to stable housing and self-sufficiency, only to find a real lack of affordable housing options currently in our community when they're ready to leave the shelter. So we want to thank you for your leadership in addressing this crisis, and we urge you to put forward a measure that will help to increase funding for affordable housing in San Mateo County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ives. No more speakers. That's it. Okay. There's a lot of note-taking going on here, and I'm assuming there are some questions. So maybe we'll start with Supervisor Pine. Comments or questions?
I don't think I have any questions.
Thank you.
I can give comments later.
Thank you. Supervisor Tissier.
I don't actually have a question. I was pleased to hear that a lot of the speakers are willing to step up and help do outreach. And I realize they're nonprofits, so we have to be very sensitive to campaigns and all, but I do think a lot of the congregations, everybody's feeling this, and I think we really need people to be voices for us here at the county, because if we do this measure, the sales tax measure, there's not a lot of time, and there's not a lot of money. And so I think it's going to take all of us to step into those shoes. And I know this board cares very deeply about continuing that for many purposes, not just housing, but those that need housing usually need a lot of other services as well. So I would say that I'm more than willing to make a motion on the 20-year extension. I think that's appropriate. It gives us a much better lens out into the future, so we know what we're really working with. And I would say, with this crowd here, I think that it's very likely that that will pass. It only needs, is it 50-plus-one? Is it 50%? And that gives us some, I think, very good leverage on this particular issue. So just a little bit from me.
Thank you. Supervisor Horsley.
Well, just a couple of comments. Of course, we, you know, it was, I have to thank the past president, Supervisor Groom, actually putting me and you together in a jobs-housing gap task force that turned out to be, you know, I think it's a real turning point in the county, really made a significant difference, bringing together city council people, people from the business community, from Google, from Facebook, from the airport, and everybody recognizing that this is a problem that we all have to dig into. And one of the things that we came up with at the end was, not because we pushed it, but rather because the process pushed us, said that we really need to have a revenue measure. And so it really comes out, that's one of the recommendations, to have some kind of a revenue measure. I was really kind of hopeful that we would be able to have a bond, but it's pretty clear that, you know, we could put in a ballot, we would probably lose. You have to raise a massive campaign, and probably wouldn't make it. So it does look like the extension of Measure A is the way to go. And, you know, one of the speakers mentioned having a jumpstart, and, you know, perhaps we could, if that's the direction of the board, take a look at the potential of using some of that revenue to do a bond. I don't know if it's possible or what we could do, but just some way of jump-starting things, because it does take a long time to develop buildings. And so we have fallen way behind, and we have, you know, no one's, there's nothing else to do but to actually, you know, dig in and get something done. One of the other things I just want to comment on, Supervisor Slocum, actually, my good friend Warren and I actually did some, was a housing task force, not our jobs-housing gap task force, it had something else to do with, the group of people who make decisions on our CDGB and ESG grants. And one of the persons said, you know, "Housing is more than just a roof over your head, it's dignity." And that really stuck with me, that, you know, we've got to do something, and we have to be able to, you know, we have so many service workers who, you know, we have these high-tech companies coming in, but not everybody is a high-tech worker. There's so many service workers that, you know, we don't want to be putting them into way far away and having to commute, so, you know, I'm really in favor of extending the sales tax for the 20 years.
Thank you, Supervisor Horsley. Supervisor Groom.
Thank you, President Slocum. I'm in favor of extending the sales tax. I would prefer 10, but I see the wind here. But I think that I kind of like the increments of 10 years. I think we have a chance to present what we have done and ask the voters to support that and encourage us to do more. So that's my first preference. I think the other thing is, and I hope that the housing gap task force was able to get some more synergy, because we're going to need the help, not just of the outreach, as Adrienne described, but we're going to need the help of the various cities in our county. We have some very strict land use ordinances. I come from a city that has a very strict land use ordinance in both height and density, and we're going to have to really look at making some of those changes, and I know that that's difficult, but we're going to need a lot of work in those communities so that we can find places to put this housing, that we hopefully have enough money to start building. The worst thing in the world would be to pass this and then set aside X amount of Measure A for affordable housing, and then not have a place to build it. So I think that we have work to do, working with our friends from the cities, and I know, I think Councilman Bonilla was here a minute ago. I know he is an advocate of affordable housing, but we're going to have a lot of work to do, and with residents, who right now are overwhelmed by the amount of car automobile traffic, overwhelmed in many cases by the people who are taking 30 and 40 and 50 minutes to get to work. Of course, if we have more housing, we should be able to reduce that kind of automobile traffic, but there is a mindset, and we see it every day with people who are just frustrated. So we have a lot of education and a lot of advocacy to do, and to get whatever we decide on passed, and then get into the process of designating areas to find the housing and getting it built. So I think we have a very heavy lift ahead of us. But again, I would prefer the 10 years, but, well...
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Pine.
All right, thank you. So like all my colleagues, you know, we think about this every day. We hear about the housing crisis every day. And I would have preferred a bond, because that would have created, you know, a focused new funding source for housing and for housing only. And it is the housing crisis that, you know, precipitated this whole discussion about And it's disappointing, but the poll is the poll, that, you know, unlike Alameda and Santa Clara, where apparently their numbers are quite a bit stronger, you know, we're not able to, I believe, go forward the poll, because the prospects of passage are very, very low. You know, with the Measure A extension, everyone has to remember, we're not increasing the size of the pie. And we have to, of course, remember that it's a general tax. So that means every two years, this board and boards that follow us, you know, will have to decide, you know, how it wants to allocate those funds. But again, we don't have the polling. So moving to the extension itself, well, I had some reluctance on this a couple of weeks ago. I am going to vote in favor of an extension. I mean, on the one hand, it does seem early. I mean, we're four years into a 10-year term, and frankly, I think we can renew this thing handily in any election. But that said, we know this is a favorable election. We know this is a good economy. We've got a lot to be proud of. So again, this is like, I think this is shooting fish in the barrel, but we do have a good, we do have a good, we do, maybe I'm too optimistic, but any event, I will export the extension. So on the preference, like Supervisor Groom, I too would prefer 10. I mean, for 10, and it's because of really the idea of trying to have some ability for the voters to kind of check in on us. If we go with 10, then the voters, you know, it'd be 16 years. We probably would go out for a new earlier, but, you know, it's a long time till voters would have a say. If we go for 20, then obviously that's 26 years, and that's a quarter of a century. That's a super-long time. Now, you know, the point is put forward, which is a good one, that the longer the term, I guess, the better the bonding. But, you know, frankly, I think the big problem is going to be, as Supervisor Groom already brought up, is it's going to be pulling teeth to find places to put this housing. So I, you know, I would prefer the 10 myself.
Can I just say? I'm sorry. I don't know if you want to make it, but just in terms of pulling teeth, I think one of the things that we could in fact do is, there's a lot more stabilization. There are lots of properties that come on the market that we could conceivably buy. So I don't agree that we have to find sites necessarily. There are buildings that are turned over on a regular basis that we could maintain as affordable. In fact, that's one of the reasons we're doing this one $10 million project of maintaining affordability. And we have done a couple of projects, one with Hip and one with Mid-Penn Housing. So again, if you look at a 27 or basically 27, 26-year bond, and if you dedicated some portion of, you could conceivably bond anywhere from $2 to $300 million. You know, I'm not an expert at this, and Mr. Malpe probably would be. So if you wanted to jump-start it, you could do it that way. So there's a couple of things that, the longer you do this, the greater chances of having, you know, the bonding ability. And the other thing is that you can, I think, you can, instead of saying that everything has to be built, it could be buildings that are already existing that you can maintain them for affordability.
Your point is well-taken on preservation, which is a good model. Well, good point.
You know, the bonding issue, just to, if I could just jump in, it's a complex one, and we do have bond council here, sort of could address some of that today, but it's something we'd have to look into, because it gets legally complex. But I appreciate the sentiment.
Supervisor Tissier.
We're not going to let you speak, Warren. I also want to remind people, and I mentioned this earlier, Measure A isn't only for housing.
Right. That's right.
But at the same time, we have, over these past four years, made a lot of lives very stable, and those tend to be some of the same people that could end up being displaced, but we have helped them become stable. So not only are we talking about trying to build new housing, we're talking about the nonprofits that are housing people that are being stepped into housing, and those people with mental health issues, and all those things that do impact our housing in the county for numbers, many numbers of people. And so I want to make sure that, you know, all of this, these are like building blocks. You know, the housing is absolutely critical, but all those other gaps and services that we've been able to fill, to know for the public that they can continue to be stable for a longer period of time, and we're evaluating all those programs. So we're not just throwing money at things and hope that something works, we're actually evaluating them to make sure that they actually do work. And that's really my reason for wanting to look the long term. I don't want people to think, "Oh, God, I hope in 10 years I'll still be able to get some help if I need it," or things like that. This is a much greater, greater opportunity on a lot of fronts, to be able to provide the necessary services, as well as some housing funding for those in need. So once again, I'll just reiterate, I do believe that 20 years is probably a better long term for those that need our help the most.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor.
You want to speak?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I want to go back and just recognize and thank Supervisor Carol Groom for her leadership. It was a year and a half ago or so that she created the Closing the Jobs Housing Task Force, and we started meeting in September, and I think it was a great experience. And I think you all heard earlier, as one of the speakers said, it helped change the conversation in this region, in this county. And I think that's a really great, one of the great outcomes for that task force. So Supervisor Groom, thank you for your vision. You saw this a year and a half, two years ago. The other thing I would just mention is that if you look at the total number of dollars invested in affordable, or housing in affordable housing, I think the number is around $60 million, if I'm not mistaken, that we've invested in affordable housing, and I think that is significant. In terms of the bond and the sales tax extension, I think I also started out favoring the extension, then I went to the bond, and now I'm back to supporting the sales tax extension for 20 years. I think the bond numbers in Santa Clara and Alameda were high, and, you know, there are different ecologies in those counties which led to that here. The numbers just aren't there. So I think the path for, the right path forward, frankly, that can also be transformative, is this 20-year extension of the sales tax measure. But not only that, I think in addition to the housing funding that it will provide, it does, as Supervisor Tissier has said, provide some stable funding stream to those other Measure A things that we've invested in that have made a significant difference, like the big lift. difference, like the Big Lift, the summer learning programs and those kinds of things. It stabilizes that for a long period of time. I think that's very positive for the county. I just want to thank also my co-chair, Supervisor Horsley, for his work on the Closing the Jobs to Housing Task Force. I thank the staff for all their work. There's just been countless hours, countless hours of effort put in by a team of people. And of course, all the participants from the cities and the corporations and the nonprofit sector and the faith community. It was an amazing experience. I think our work picks up again in September, if I'm not mistaken. And I know Supervisor Horsley and I are looking forward to that. So I don't know if that was a motion that you made or if we're at that point yet, but I sense that we're coming together here over the 20-year extension of the Measure A funding.
Mr. President, if I could just provide some clarity to a potential motion, it would be to direct County Council to bring back an ordinance for first reading on July 26.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Right. And just to, well said. And just to amend that, it would be, we would bring back, depending again on the will of the board, and we need a four fifths direction here if there's going to be, as required by the Revenue Taxation Code. But we would bring back two things. One is a resolution calling for an election, embedded in there would be the 75 words, and then also an introduction of an amended ordinance. And the amended ordinance would really, quite simply, just do one thing really, and that is to change the sunset date. Now, whether to change it to, you know, to add on 10 years or 20 years, we could either get the, you know, four fifths consensus now on that, or we could bring back two, you know, 10-year ordinance and a 20-year ordinance. And just to be clear, it's tacking that onto the current, or it's not replacing, it's we would be tacking on 10 or 20 years. So those are your choices.
Can we do, should we do, can we do an informal poll?
I think we heard the sentiment.
20 years?
Yeah.
Supervisor Horsley, we can count.
I give.
I'm curious, I'm curious to ask you, when you, when you come back, Mr. Byers, will that include ballot language? I know that the polling information had, well, I don't know if it was suggested, but hypothetical ballot language. When you come back, would that have the language?
Yes, the, the resolution calling for the election would include a proposed 75-word or less ballot measure. And at this moment, what we would do is adopt the suggested language by Mr. Godby. Now, the board can make changes on the 26th if there is a four fifths consensus to do so, but that would be my plan.
Mr. President, if I could make a suggestion, because of the importance of the ballot language, you may want to appoint a subcommittee of board members to work with County Council, specifically on that issue.
Let me call on Supervisor Pines. Yeah, I was kind of, figured we'd get to this and putting my lawyer hat on a little bit. I mean, there were two technical things I wanted to point out in this, and then more substantive comment. When we did Measure A the first time, we said to ensure Samhail County quality of life by retaining critical facility services such as, apologize for being a lawyer, but now we say to ensure Samhail County quality of life by retaining and improving critical services and services, including, and including to me implies we're going to do them. Anyway, small point. Another kind of technical point, we used the word disabled, and, you know, that, that really should be people with disabilities. So those are my technical points. Those are minor. But the, I guess, but the question I had for the board in general is, you know, we have this list of whatever, seven or eight illustrative things. And, you know, some of them are obviously housing, transportation. So then, you know, you get to the next three, combating human trafficking, enhancing emergency operations in 911, and fire prevention, which in many respects, we've kind of, in many respects, we've kind of taken care of a lot of that. So I guess it's just a question of, I mean, I suppose we will be maintaining them, but I just point that out. And then the question becomes, you know, do we want to add, you know, change this language at all to add some other things that this board is specifically interested in? Like, for example, the after school and summer library reading programs, I mean, I would defer to my, to Supervisor Groom, and do we want to make an express reference to more investment in early childhood? And then in one that, of course, I think is really important in today and will get increasingly important, is flood prevention and sea level rise. And today, we have it in Pescadero, we're going to have a storm, and everyone's going to be looking at us to fix these things. So now, I know that Mr. Godby is going to get a little nervous by my comment. And, but I think because the polling is so extraordinarily strong, that it's hard for me to imagine that we could take it from 73% anywhere near failing. But so I guess, I guess, so I guess I think it would be a good idea to have a subcommittee look at this. I'm happy to serve on it, or else Supervisor Horsley and, or others can serve on it. But, but I guess I need some, I guess it'd be helpful to get some feedback from the, my colleagues, putting aside the technical points, about, you know, people's appetite for making this language perhaps more reflective of needs that things we're really going to fund, as opposed to the things that we've kind of taken care of. So... Thank you, Mr. Pines. Supervisor Groom?
Oh, I just, no.
You, okay. Supervisor Horsley?
I was going to suggest that, I appreciate Supervisor Pines' comments. I don't want this to, I want to make sure that we are successful. And I also want to make sure that, you know, this actually comes out of our Jobs Housing Gap Task Force. So I'm going to suggest that the subcommittee be the President, Supervisor Slocum, and myself. And we'll certainly take input from, from the rest of the board. But I think this actually comes out of our task force. And so I think that, with your concurrence, I'd like to have that as the subcommittee.
Is, are there any comments on that idea, is that? I mean, I defer to the chair. I mean, however you want to do it.
All right, we'll create the subcommittee of Horsley and Slocum if, if we get there. But was there a motion?
I am going to make a motion to have the County Council come back with a resolution to call for the election and the introduction of an ordinance to change the sunset date and any other information you need to bring back to us on July 26th at the 20-year mark.
I'll second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Yes.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Now, we'll move on to item number seven, which is a recommendation to make an appointment or call an election to fill the impending vacancy in the office of Samhail County Sheriff.
Mr. President, members of the board, the clerk of the board has received a letter from the sheriff indicating his intention to retire as of July 16th, 2016. As the accompanying memo from County Council and myself indicate, under the county charter, the board has two options. One would be to appoint a successor for the balance of the term, and the second would be to call an election. And we await the direction of your board regarding those items. County Council may wish to add to that.
No, I think, I think you summarized it. The board, you know, the charter makes it clear that you have two, basically two options. And that is, within 30 days of the date of resignation, which in this case is the, is July 17th, you either must make a, make an appointment or call, call for an election. So I think that should form the basis for today's discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Byers. Okay, we'll start with comments or questions, but maybe Supervisor Groom can start off?
Okay, thank you.
The resignation is July 16th. I mentioned July 17th. I think Sheriff Monks' date of resignation is technically July 16th.
Do you have any public comment?
Oh, yeah.
We have public comment?
Yes.
Should we do that now?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
First is Katrina Ri, followed by Alex Villa Fuerte.
President Slocum, members of the board, I'm here with Alex Villa Fuerte from Congresswoman Anna Ashu's office. And if we could have four minutes, since we are representing two, two offices, we would like to read a letter from Congresswoman Spear and Congresswoman Ashu.
Well, that's highly unusual, but two minutes each.
Okay, thank you. Dear President Slocum and members of the board, we are unaccustomed to weighing in on county matters outside of measures and initiatives or local policy discussions, such as the recent ones about housing and sea level rise, that involve broad federal and local policies. Many of you, from time to time, have asked us to join you in support of these and other public policy efforts. Some of you, independent of each other, have also recently asked us to comment on the decision before you today, whether to appoint or to call for an election in the matter of the replacement for sheriff. For a long period of time, there have been rumors that Sheriff Monks would retire early and pave the way for the undersheriff to take this position. Whether these rumors are true or not, this has been the perception. We believe that our mutual constituents support a decision-making process that is absent of a perception of preordained outcome. The office of the sheriff is a critically important job, as you all know. You know that you share our, we know that you share our belief that the public has the right to be heard. The question is whether an election within such a short timeframe and with one announced candidate, the undersheriff, who has been working for more than a year to become sheriff, would allow for an even playing field on which to, on which to compete, we are not sure. We do know that the members of law enforcement, that there are members of law enforcement who are willing to compete for an appointment but who feel severely disadvantaged to compete in an election under the present circumstances. We therefore believe an appointment process should be undertaken, which allows the candidates to openly apply and to be reviewed. This seems especially important in light of the recent public concerns about policing practices throughout the country.
We believe that a way to build public confidence would be for the board to conduct an open and transparent search for a successor. We also realize that the timeframe for appointment is very short and would require you to either extend it, which may not be allowed under the charter, or to add additional board meetings to your schedule in the next month so that the public is able to participate for those meetings and perhaps, if permissible, the selection process itself. We realize the selection of the sheriff is customarily made by voters and have for decades always supported this process. In this instance, the voters themselves may be best served by a method that increases competition for the position and that creates a zone of evaluation that is informed by rigorous public analysis of multiple persons. As we all seek to increase the confidence of the public in the administration of justice, we also seek ways to demonstrate to the public that it, that its interests are at the heart of our decisions. Writing applications, establishing a public interview and discussion with applicants, and ensuring the public of a transparent selection process will, in our judgment, help to increase confidence in the, in the administration of justice in Samhail County. All the best, Congressman Jackie Spear and Congressman Anna Ashu. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall we leave a copy with you?
Our last speaker is Michael Stogner.
Good morning, Supervisors. Just so the public knows, I've personally asked for Supervisor Carol Groom and Don Horsley to recuse themselves from this subject matter, from this topic. One reason Carol Groom was appointed in 2008, so she's a benefactor of being appointed, and Citizen Dave Pine made an excellent statement back in 2008 about the importance of letting the voters pick certain positions. I'm in favor of you placing this on the ballot for November because there's zero cost to the voters. A short time period for someone to run a really powerful campaign might not be that necessary in Samhail County. I think most of the residents understand what's going on. Undersheriff Carlos Bolanos was never a sheriff deputy until Greg Monks brought him in. And when we talk about the morale of the sheriff's department, there were two or three deputies that could have easily been a great undersheriff for Samhail County. And Warren, I read a comment in the Today's Almanac regarding, you know, talking to, you know, sheriff deputies. And you would think that a sheriff deputy might express a discomfortable or uncomfortable conversation. As a private victim's advocate, I can assure you, they would never make a comment negative towards their leadership. So on behalf of all the sheriff deputies of Samhail County and on behalf of all the residents of Samhail County, I urge you to just place this on the ballot, and let's see what shakes out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stogner. Are there, there are no other, no other speakers? Okay, so we'll open it up for board comments. Does anybody want to start? Supervisor Groom?
Well, let me, I'm, I'm in favor of slotting this into the November election since we have that opportunity. Had it occurred at some other time, we wouldn't have the opportunity. We would have had to either call a special election or go through the whole appointment process. Let me just make one comment. Yes, I was, I was appointed to this position. I did not ask to be appointed. I was prepared to run an election, but this board made the decision that they did not, actually, only Supervisor Tissier was here, they made a decision that they did not want to call an election because of the extra cost. So I ran within one year after that appointment process. But I do think that an election process creates a sense of legitimacy. And sometimes an appointment process does not, even though it's done in, under rules of, rules of order and, and a process that to which everybody has to apply. It's just, I think an election is, is the better choice to go, especially since we have the opportunity to have an election this November, and we don't have to call for a special election. So that would be my, that would, those are my comments.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Horsley?
I just want to make a couple, I want to make a couple of comments, both about the process and about Greg Monks. Greg was, actually was, he was an HR guy for the city of Palo Alto, but he had worked for me when I was a sergeant, and he was a deputy sheriff, and he was an impressive deputy sheriff at the time. And I hated that he went to Palo Alto Police. And so I brought him back into the department. And for about 13 and a half years, we served together, and we did everything from, you know, anytime there was a major homicide, you know, I'd get a call from him in the middle of the night. We'd go out to homicide cases. Not that they were fun, but we did a lot of fun things too, and Fourth of July stuff, riding horses through the parade. We always had a wonderful time together. And I really miss those days with Greg. And I'm really sorry that he has this illness. And I do not believe necessarily that they were planning on having a midterm election. I think that it was forced by his health problem. Otherwise, I'm, knowing Greg, I'm convinced that he was going to finish out his term. It's also true that Carlos was, he had announced that he wasn't going to run, which probably, you know, I did the same thing when, when Greg was going to run. I said this was going to be my last term, and it gave him an opportunity to run. And somebody else could have run, but they did not. And that's the case that we're faced with today. There is one candidate, essentially, that's Carlos Bolanos, and there isn't anybody else. The other, in terms of, you know, having, you know, doing a worldwide or nationwide or California-wide search, what I look at is the department. And as you, as you know, I love the department. And I think it runs really well. I think, I look at, they've been able to expand on taking over some cities like San Carlos and Milbrae and the whole coast. I work with the deputies all the time and, because it's mostly in my district, I serve, you know, they, well, in the district that I serve, they are the police agency for the most part, and they do a fabulous job. So if I thought that there was something wrong with the department, I would agree. Let's look for some other leadership. But I do not see that being necessary. I think that Carlos has done an outstanding job. I did not endorse him. I know that Mr. Stogner indicated I should recuse myself because I went to one of his events. I did go to one of his events because I wanted to know who supported him. Did the deputy support him? I think that's important. And what did he have to say? What, what was he going to do in a department? And, you know, I look at the way in which they have recruited women and minorities, and I like, I look at the way they treat people on the street. And I know that because, again, you know, I deal with the SO on a regular basis. I think it's an excellent department. And I don't know, you know, why would I look outside to find some, when I have somebody already that I have confidence in, why would I look someplace else for somebody who maybe looks good on an interview? But I have no idea how he or she is going to function in a department. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm willing to... So as far as I'm concerned, I'm willing to support, I would support it today.
Motion.
A motion to name Carlos Bolanos as the next sheriff. I also say that I worked with him for a number of years as the chief of police of Redwood City. We didn't always agree, but we fought things out, and we did things for the good of the county. And so I look at him as an outstanding leader in law enforcement, and I would be proud to support him. I did not support him publicly, and I probably would have in the future, but in any case, I would be pleased at some point if there's a nomination to nominate him to replace Greg. I'm sorry, I'll miss Greg as the sheriff, although I hope to keep in contact with him as a friend, and I hope he, his illness, I know he, well, just hope for the best for him and his family.
Thank you. Supervisor Tissia.
Thank you, President Slocum. You know, the instability here in our nation relating to the violence that we're seeing against law enforcement and against individuals makes me believe that, I've thought about this long and hard, it makes me believe that we need stability now in our sheriff's department. We need someone with the depth and breadth of the department, someone that works well with all the agencies throughout the county. And I will tell you that our sheriff's department, including the sheriff and undersheriff Bolanos, have worked very well with the law enforcement agencies up and down this county, which has made things work really well with our narcotics task force, our vehicle theft task force. I've spent the last 12 years as basically the liaison, at least it started that way, we changed our community structure to criminal justice here in our county. And over those 10 years, we have built a new facility. We're now working on programming. I was just in a meeting with undersheriff Bolanos and others, talking about our new programming that we're going to bring forward, which is cutting-edge 21st century, really a way to really help people get up and improve themselves in our community. We're also working with, at the recommendation of Congressman Spear, with a group called Lipstick, which is looking at how we keep women from having guns, providing guns to husbands and boyfriends, because at the end of the day, they don't realize they're in as much trouble as the person that commits the crime. I sit on the criminal justice working group, I sit on the vehicle theft task force. I've seen firsthand the work that's been done by the sheriff's department, by the sheriff, by undersheriff Bolanos, and I feel that right now, I know, yes, it would be a great time of election, but at the same time, I think we need that stability within our department right now. And I am also going to support, and I would do it today, I've given a lot of thought over the weekend, whether we should, you know, wait and do it differently, but I don't think I see anybody in our county that has the depth and breadth of knowledge of our sheriff's department that can actually bring that stability other than undersheriff Bolanos.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Groom, I'm sorry, Supervisor Pine.
Thank you. You know, I think the, you know, the first question concerning the board is one of process and not of people. So, you know, in thinking that through, you know, it's not infrequent in both the private sector and in our own history here in the county, to have extraordinary person as, is kind of the deputy, the next person up. Like, by way of example, I see Louise Rogers, phenomenal, capable person. But when Dean Frazier left, we did conduct a search. I see Mike Caligy, phenomenal assistant county manager. We did have interviews too, before he was selected. So the question then is, you know, what's the best process? And I've been really struggling with this because, you know, typically, I think election is the best process. But this is really tricky this time because we're 109 days away from the election, and, you know, it wouldn't be a level playing field. So, you know, I would be inclined to invite other candidates to imply, perhaps, I don't know, perhaps, you know, we'll see. And we can look at those candidates the way we have looked at, looked at other senior leaders in the county and evaluate them. Another option, although I don't know, people may find it amusing, is on the election front is, you know, we could do a special election further out, like in March, it would cost us $500,000, but it would alleviate the problem of the, of the fact that, it would give somebody a chance to, give them a chance to compete. So, anyway, when I look across those options, I would favor embarking on a 30-day, embarking on a 30-day appointment process.
Thank you, Supervisor Pine. Other comments, questions? Just a couple of points, and I think, when I look back on my career as a department head for many, many years, and I'm sure Supervisor Horsley could speak to this, you're always faced with the decision, the choice of, do we take somebody from the inside or do we take somebody from the outside? And in this case, I think it kind of sort of comes down to that, whether you're, or with the interview and appointment process. And I think where I come down, and I too gave a lot of thought, not just this weekend, I'm sure you thought about it before then, when Greg sent his letter, but to me, one of the considerations is, it's who you know versus who you don't know. And I think Supervisor Horsley said with undersheriff Bolanos, pretty much, I think we know what we're getting, and that is a professional law enforcement official who has demonstrated through the years his commitment to our county. And speaking as a District Four supervisor, I know that Carlos is committed to community policing, and he has worked long and hard in that area trying to improve quality of life for residents. And I think Supervisor Tissia is right that at this point in time, it gets down to this question of not only stability, but, you know, I think you know what you're going to, what you're going to get. So I respect Supervisor Pine's comment about, you know, it's the process and not the person. I understand that, and I understand Supervisor Groom's perspective also, but in the end, if there were other, other active candidates who had been out there campaigning, I would probably feel differently, but I'm prepared to support appointing Carlos Bolanos as the next, actually, I think it would be the 20th sheriff of San Mateo County. Any event, if there is a motion or additional?
I'll make the motion to appoint Carlos Bolanos as the next sheriff.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, yep, to appoint Carlos. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? No.
No.
Thank you. Motion carries?
Motion carries, and the appointment will be effective July 17th, 2016.
And of course, as Supervisor Horsley said, we certainly wish Sheriff Monks the best with his medical situation, and, you know, our thoughts are with his family and his children, and we just wish him the best. And I know we all want to stay in contact with Sheriff. He has quite a stellar record, as Supervisor Tissia outlined, but we do wish him the best. And I think, you know, the number one thing that we all have is our health, and he's taking care of that, and I think that's a good thing. So with that, we'll move on to item number eight.
Mr. President, members of the board, you have my report for the current period. Just one item really to call your attention to, and that is that District Attorney Steve Wagstaff will assume the responsibility for being the president of the California District Attorneys Association in the coming year, and we congratulate him on that. Obviously, he didn't follow my advice, and that is you always attend the meeting in which they vote for you as president, so that you could avoid that. But he missed that meeting, and so he's the incoming president, and I know he'll do an outstanding job.
Thank you, Mr. Godby. And now we'll move on to item number nine, board member reports, starting with Supervisor Tissia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a very sad situation. Mark Goodman, a member of the Central County Fire Department, head fire mechanic, and also a Colma firefighter, who's a lieutenant there in Colma, passed away suddenly, unexpectedly on July 10th. He is survived by his wife, Annika. He was also a longtime resident of Daly City. He joined the Central County Fire Department as a fire mechanic in January 2014 and was a Colma firefighter for over 20 years. He was very involved in the Colma Firemen's Social Club and a coordinator for the California Firemen's Muster Association, where he traveled throughout the state to participate in the tradition of fire musters, a gathering of devoted comrades and antique equipment for the purpose of competition and friendship. He was always there to lend a hand, a mentor to our youth, and will always be remembered for his generosity and warmth to others. So I would like to adjourn in his memory.
Thank you. Nothing about drive smart or age well?
It's too late. I forgot my sheet today. I'm giving you a breather.
Supervisor Pine?
Nothing today, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Groom?
Thank you. I would like to ask us to adjourn in memory of Barbara Adamson. She was a longtime Mills Peninsula employee and assigned to the RSVP program, of which this county is very supportive. She was the program manager for RSVP for the last 15 years. She died suddenly after a very brief illness. Her sister came, her sister and brother were able to be here to help her with her last couple of days. She's truly a wonderful person, devoted to seniors, devoted to senior volunteerism, and everybody, everybody in the Mills Peninsula family will miss her.
Thank you. Supervisor Horsley? And I have no report, so that takes us to retiring to closed session, and we'll be back to report out at the conclusion of our closed session discussions. Okay. Mr. Byers, could you please report out from closed session?
Yes, thank you, President Slocum. The board met in closed session to consider one item, it was an initiation of litigation, and no action was taken. Thank you.
We are adjourned.